Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, oh, here we go, nice and loud. We're gonna go ahead and call the March 3rd, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. Go ahead and start with a moment of silence, and I think we have a dedication today.
Tommy Arsalman, he was known as the goat dairy farmer on the Scotts Valley area. He invited many youth out to his farm to see how the farm worked. I know my two young children in preschool went out to his farm. He was a proud immigrant here in our community, and he leaves behind a wife and two young children.
Dr. Pace, would you lead us to the bunch of leaders?
Institute of Life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda today? All right, thank you. Moving along to consent agenda, consent agenda are items that are usually non-controversial. I'm gonna go ahead and move to consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the board, any of the board members would like to remove?
No.
Any from the public? Are there any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none? Go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Consent Agenda 5.1 and 5.2.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. So we've still got a couple of minutes here before we move along to our timed items. And so let's go right into item 7.3, Consideration of a Cannabis Equity Grant Application Type 1.20. Is that all right? Oh, you gotta get Patrick. Okay, I didn't know that.
7.2.
Okay, let's go right into item 7.2. Approve long-distance travel from March 30th to April 2nd, 2020. The county administrative officer, Carol Hutchinson, to attend meetings in Washington, DC with federal representatives to advocate for additional disaster recovery funds for Lake County. And B, consideration of update to fall 2019 advocacy materials for use in 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, last fall, Chair Scott and I were scheduled to go to DC with the Rebuild North Bay Group and a number of other fire-impacted counties and cities to advocate for more recovery funds to come to our county. And unfortunately, due to PSPS at the time, we had to cancel the trip because the county was under an emergency declaration at the point the back-to-back PSPS went as long as it did. So there is another opportunity to go coming up here at the end of the month. And so I have this on your agenda, but at the same time, I have to say that most certainly I'm paying attention to all of the reports on coronavirus and whether or not this would impact this travel and whether it makes sense to travel in light of those circumstances. And I've raised those concerns with the group as well. And so I think all the counties and cities are gonna be looking at that. And so with all of that in mind, at this point, I'm asking for your approval for the travel, but at the same time, I'm certainly in no rush to make the actual travel arrangements because I think more information is needed about whether or not it's safe to travel in light of the coronavirus. So that is A. And then B, we have updated the advocacy materials we prepared last fall for the trip. Just a slight update, because much of this wasn't super-time sensitive, but it's been refreshed somewhat, and those are the areas that we would be doing some federal advocacy on behalf of Lake County.
Anything from the board? Any discussion from the board?
I think, sorry.
Go ahead, supervisor Brown.
I think that seeing how, I'm not gonna give 100% credit to Supervisor Simon, but his being at the CPUC meeting seemed to have definitely been a factor as to why the CPUC came here. Us not going to Washington, DC is definitely gonna be a factor of not getting a response as well. So I think that we need to be at a table where we can try and get some kind of funding or some kind of resources to help us regain what we've lost. So I think that it's important to try and be at those places. Did the other counties go last time?
There was, as I remember Supervisor Scott, there was one or two that was in the same situation where we were, where they had declared a disaster, and I think there were one or two that pulled out.
There was the King Kate Fire at the same time, too.
But a majority went.
Right. And do you know if there, what's their remarks from those meetings as far as, did they feel they're getting a return on their investment for that?
I haven't had those conversations.
Was there any? No? Okay. Because I'd be interested in finding out what conversations they had and what kind of maybe promises or potential funding they may have gotten in return. I'd be interested in that. And I was just wondering, since you're in DC, maybe something to add on, and I know it's not necessarily a recovery issue, but I think that we have two major projects that are going on in the county that may be able to get some help from federal assistance, and that would be the Middle Creek Restoration Project and the Potter Valley Project. And so maybe if we can have conversations while there to continuously put that in their thoughts.
Thank you.
Other than that, I absolutely support you going, and yes, I want you to be safe while I'm doing it.
Any other discussion?
No, I agree.
I completely agree. You know, I will, I had the discussion with Carol about also traveling. I was planning on traveling back to DC, too, but at this point, I've decided not to travel back to DC at this point as things are progressing. You know, obviously, I'm gonna stay here in the county. So it was initiated that myself and Carol, but I have been keeping an eye on, obviously, we're gonna get some reports here pretty soon, and obviously Carol's gonna be doing the same thing. It's opportunity, but I decided I'm not traveling back to DC at this point. So I will let you know if anyone else on the board would like to go, I think that'd be an opportunity, too. But I, at this time, I'm not traveling at this time right now.
And certainly at this time, every day, you know, we wake up to the news and there's more outbreak of coronavirus. And so with that in mind, if your board gives me this approval, I would probably make my decision about actually going in about a week. I'd just like to monitor the news a bit more before I make an airline ticket purchase.
Just add more, ultimately, if something changes drastically to here in the next few weeks, something changes, I would definitely change my mind, you know, at that point. So this was something that was initiated a while ago, a long time before we had any of this hitting our, you know, hitting us like it is now. And so, yeah, if something changes to the positive, I would absolutely be heading back to DC because I completely agree. Having a voice at the table is the most important thing. And there are, you know, I think one other thing, too, one thing that I, did we have opportunity zones in there, too?
It's in there.
To talk about? Okay, excellent.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll put together some material on the Middle Creek Restoration Project and the Potter Valley Project as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I see no more comment from the board. Any public input on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve long-distance travel from March 30th to April 2nd, 2020 for county administrative officer Carol Hutchinson to attend meetings in Washington, DC with federal representatives to advocate for additional disaster recovery funds for Lake County as well as the other added material.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Just kidding.
Abstained?
His vote is whatever. Right. Thank you.
Abstained. Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Supervisor Brown.
Happy to do it.
Do we need to take action on item B for the consideration of the update to the materials?
Yes.
So I move to approve the updates to fall 2019 advocacy materials for use in 2020 with amendments as noted.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, with that motion, if I could ask, since Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Sabatier are both on committees working on Middle Creek Restoration and the Potter Valley Project, I'll review those changes to it with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes with the members. Okay, moving right along. I know we're into the time here as far as public comment. We're gonna go ahead and go to public input, our 905 item. And today, we have two, well, we have one forum with two folks on it here. We have Dr. Gary Pace and Brian Martin.
Good morning, Gary Pace, Public Health Officer of the county. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. I wanna talk coronavirus update again. I mean, I know this is on people's mind. We're all watching the news, and I think Sheriff Martin's gonna chime in on it as well. And I think we're probably gonna go ahead and make this a regular item on the agenda so that I can just kinda come in and give an update if there's anything to give. It's moving faster than I think we anticipated, and so there's just more going on all the time. Basically, it's, as everybody's aware, it's spreading, there's becoming pockets of activity around the country, and I think this is probably gonna continue to expand. It's probably out in the community significantly in different places. At this point in Lake County, there's no cases, there's no, there's no known community spread, but we haven't really done any testing here because nobody in the county has met the criteria for testing, and the CDC has had very limited, very constricted protocols on who can get tested and who can't. That's gonna change probably this week and into next week where there's gonna be much more availability of testing, and so they're gonna loosen some of the restrictions, so we're gonna get more, a better sense of actually who's infected and what's going on out there. But at this point, we don't have any significant concerns in the county about infection or community spread. We're not seeing a huge spike in disease activity or anything like that at this point. Just to talk about what the preparations in the county are, we are, we have opened the DOC at the Health Department now, so we're meeting daily. We're going to, we're basically working at our desk, but we're communicating daily around this, and we're in communication with the healthcare providers and some of the other agencies around the area. There is, we had a public forum last night that we got invited to speak, and there was a panel. Sheriff Martin was there, Chief Doughty for EMS, Rob Young with the schools, and some of the folks from Sutter. I think that was everybody, right?
And Paige.
Dr. Page from Sutter, right. So Dr. Page, and then Teresa Campbell, who's the Director of Nursing, and then Tammy Carter, who's the Infection Control Nurse. So they were, they were all there, and we basically talked a little bit about what each of the agencies is doing for preparation. And Sam says at this point, there's like 8,000 hits on the Facebook page or something. So people are watching us. Supervisor Scott was there, so thank you. And, you know, I think a big part of this right now is trying to communicate to the public and trying to just have people aware in preparation without, and so it's a little tricky to talk about it so that, because we're trying not to, we don't wanna induce panic because at this point, there's no infection in the area, but we're also trying to encourage people to get prepared and to sort of think ahead because most likely, it's going to come, and then how serious it's gonna be, we just don't know. There was a case, a couple cases, I think in Sonoma County, they basically shut down a school yesterday for at least a day. I don't know how long that's gonna go on for. And Sonoma County has declared an emergency there. Several of the Bay Area counties have declared either health emergencies or emergencies. Napa has not, Mendocino has not, we have not, but you know, it's, there's, I think the question will come up periodically, and I think the other counties are kinda looking for more support so that the state will end up declaring an emergency. I think there's gonna be more of these sort of questions about school closure and limiting large public gatherings, and so that's gonna be happening more and more in the Bay Area. And, you know, we'll give our recommendations, and people are gonna do what they're gonna do. The travel question, I think, in my opinion, this is probably going to continue to evolve and get worse. I don't, you know, I think it looks like some airlines are reimbursing, others are not at this point, and so, you know, if you buy a ticket, you're taking a risk that you may eat the ticket. I think, you know, I don't know at this point that I'd be so concerned about actually getting sick on the plane. That wouldn't be what I'd be thinking, but it's possible you might get stranded someplace. You know, I think as things are changing, they're gonna be, unusual interventions are gonna be happening that you can't anticipate, and so, and what it's gonna be like in a month, or I didn't quite catch the date, but a month or two, we don't know. So it's just, it's, and I think if anybody's thinking about traveling internationally, just look on the CDC website for what the recommendations are about that. So, I mean, I guess unless there's any questions, I'll just kind of come back weekly if people wanna know. I guess the one other thing is we're, I'm particularly interested in the elderly population now. That seems to be the folks that are the most vulnerable. And I think probably really the best thing we can offer at this point is preparation. So I'm hoping to get out and talk to the nursing facilities and maybe go to the senior center, get on the radio or something on the senior program that is out there. So that's kind of the general. And there's also, just to emphasize, the individual activity that can be done, hand washing, covering your mouth when you're coughing. It's airborne, and so anything people can do to wash their hands more regularly, cover their mouth if they're coughing, stay away from people that are sick. If people are sick, to stay out of public. So I think that's it.
Where can the public find the information for best practices, other stuff like that?
So the best information is on, we're gonna, we're, I think today or tomorrow are gonna get some of the links on our, the Health Department webpage. The place where we get the information is either from the CDPH website, which is California Department of Public Health. And when you hit that webpage, there's a coronavirus, and you hit that, and then you can get all the stuff. But all, most of that information is coming from the Center for Disease Control. So the Center for Disease Control has a very good website. It's a little complex, so sometimes a little hard to find it. We're gonna put the links on our webpage so people can just go in and click on it. But that's, that's kind of the way to get the information.
All right. Thank you.
As Dr. Pace said, there was a, actually a fairly productive town hall meeting last night. There wasn't a lot of people in attendance, but to hear that 8,000 people have watched it, I can certainly tell you that I learned more than I brought to that meeting, so I would encourage anybody that has questions about this to go back and review what was said. I was tracking the comments as the meeting was going on, and one of the comments that stuck out to me was, information is the antidote for anxiety. This is gonna cause a lot of anxiety in our community. One thing that we know here in Lake County is that we know how to respond to disasters. And if this turns into a disaster, we're gonna be prepared for it, we're going to respond to it, and not, not having to deal with panic and anxiety certainly makes that easier for all of us. Dr. Pace and I have actually been talking since last week on this topic, and I've since directed my staff to develop a protocol, consult with other agencies in the surrounding areas, certainly some of our neighboring agencies. Sonoma County, Napa County, Solano County have all had confirmed cases. So they've started working on protocols for their jurisdictions. We borrowed from them and kind of adapted to our needs. And as we speak, if it's not up already, sometime this morning, I expect to have that protocol available for the public, and not only for the public, for other department heads within the county to take steps for your individual departments to make preparations for the event of an outbreak of this, or quite frankly, just the flu. A lot of the information that's being put out in how to respond to this is very similar to the flu. They're both transmittable viruses. We have some individual tips on there. Wash your hands if you're sick, stay home. I tell my employees, sick time isn't for you, it's for everybody else. If you're sick, stay home, and we really encourage that. The primary goal of our protocol, to me, was a little bit surprising, was the care of our employees and their families. And looking into it and thinking about it, because everybody thinks, well, your first goal should be the safety of the public. If our families are sick, our employees can't come to work. If our employees are sick, they can't come to work. We can't accomplish that mission. We in law enforcement, we in first responders, as far as firefighters, paramedics, everybody that works in this building is just as susceptible to these illnesses as everybody else. We don't have any special formulas to keep us safe, but what we do have is the information to have those good practices and implement those, so we're going to encourage everybody to do that. So the protocol is fairly comprehensive. It takes into consideration a lot of things, like what do you do about staffing levels? Do you plan on maybe cutting back office hours if you have a high absentee rate because of this illness? Cross-train your employees so that if somebody's sick, somebody else can provide those essential functions to keep your operations up and running to the best extent possible. Limit your contact with the public. When we transport people in our car that we think might be sick, whether it's coronavirus or anything else, we encourage them, open the front windows a little bit, open the back windows a little bit more, get that air circulating. These things are airborne, and that's how they're transmitted. So a lot of little steps in there. It's not copyrighted information. It's up to share for anybody that wants it, whether it's a department, a department head, a department member, employee, or a member of the public. I encourage you to go check that out, and even more, so I encourage you to go check out the forum from last night. It's quite informative. Any questions from the board?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bruno, do you have one question?
I do have a question for Dr. Pace. We keep hearing about, we don't have anything here in Lake County, and I also keep hearing that there's a lack of testing kits. Are we equipped with at least some testing kits in our hospitals?
No. The, the testing has been controlled through the federal government, and it's, until probably Friday, they did all the testing in the country. And they, and as of, they initially tried to roll something out a couple of weeks ago, and that testing wasn't accurate, and so they, they put it, they shut it down. They have since got testing that they feel like is adequate. They've rolled it out. There are, I think there were 700 kits in the state of California as of the weekend. They're saying now, I was just on a call this morning on my way in, and they're, they're expanding it. They say there's gonna be 700,000 or something out by the end of the week, and probably by a million or something by next week. So it's, the spigot is turned on now, and I think by next week, they will end up in the local hospitals. But the way they're rolling it out, so initially, it was controlled by the, by the CDC, and all the specimens had to go to Atlanta to get tested. Last week, that changed, there's, I think there's like four sites in California that are doing it, but they're all in the high, high-intensity areas where they have a lot of concern. And then they're gonna expand that out to 14 state labs, and so, for example, the, one of the things you all approved recently was to try to support the Sonoma County lab to stay open. That will be one of the labs that they'll be, will be available. And then eventually, probably in a week or so, they're gonna be out at point of care in the hospital. So it's not anywhere like Lake County at this point, but within a week or so, it probably will be. What they're gonna do about the criteria, see, it's only been either people that have been, traveled to those countries, been in contact with a known case, or since the case last week, people that were extremely sick and hospitalized were the only ones that could be tested. So if you had a bad cough and went into your doctor and they said, wow, this could be coronavirus, and it could be, we have, they wouldn't approve the testing up at this point. But probably within a week, that'll change. So, so we just don't know whether that was coronavirus or not.
And so if it's possible, as this reoccurs on our agendas, can you keep us updated as far as the testing kits?
Sure, yeah.
And make sure that we're equipped to be able to check? Because I, too, am a concern, and I've already spoken to you about this, about our elderly population. Since we are 10 years over the age of, the average age of California, we definitely have an elderly population compared to other places.
Right, for sure, yeah.
So we will have this as a standing item as we move forward.
Great, I'll just come every week.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Pace, thank you. Brian Martin. I know that took a little bit longer. Thank you for everybody being patient on that, but we'll get this as an item next week, so public input won't be as long. I'd like to go back to really quick, I think it's gonna be a quick item, item 7.3, 2-0-162, Consideration of a Cannabis Equity Grant Application Type 1 Funding.
Good morning, members of the board. Patrick Sullivan, Tax Administrator. I'm here to discuss the type 1 funding for the cannabis equity, local equity program. The state has created a program that can provide local jurisdictions that qualify funding for disadvantaged communities and communities that were impacted by cannabis prohibition. About 10 jurisdictions so far have established this program. There was a rural jurisdiction roughly comparable to ours, County of Humboldt. They received about $1.3 million as a result of this program, and these grants are supposed to grow in size. Currently, there is an opportunity for a planning grant, which did not exist last year. This type 1 funding can provide up to $150,000 for an interested jurisdiction. From initial research, it's pretty clear that Lake County would qualify for the criteria. The application deadline is March 9th if your board wants to proceed with it. So we have begun initial research. Our office has been in contact with Humboldt State University, which conducted the necessary research and assessments for this program, and they are able to do that here if they ended up being the provider. There may be other consulting groups out there that we don't know about, but so far, they are the provider that would most likely serve this area. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, if your board is looking to apply to that program, the deadline is March 9th, so we would have to get moving on it pretty quickly.
Supervisor Sabatier.
The potential of $1 million or about, just like Humboldt received, would that be a possibility still for this year with the March 9th deadline, if we work with somebody like Humboldt State?
It is not possible for us to get that larger allocation this year. That's the type 2 funding. That opportunity will present itself again in spring. It will take four to six months to complete that assessment. Humboldt originally did all that legwork on their own, and they funded it out of their own pocket essentially. So that's why they were able to jump in. There were only about 10 jurisdictions that had progressed far enough to achieve that funding last year. But it went from 10 million in funding this year, or last year, to 30 million, and it's contingent on how the state cannabis tax revenues perform. But all expectation is that there would be that opportunity in spring.
So this spring?
Next, next spring, spring 2021. We could apply, yeah, for the larger pot.
Okay, well, that's the steps we have to take? That's the steps.
The larger pot. Did you really say that?
I did.
Supervisor Brown.
And I noticed that you said it continued to grow, too. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on there. So I'm all for applying for this grant, but I would like to at some point come back and find out exactly how it would apply to us, because I'm reading this thing, and there's a lot of feel-good buzzwords in there that really don't mean anything. They probably don't mean anything, but they certainly don't mean anything to me at this point. And one of those is required equity assessment. You know, what does that mean? Equity for who? And, and I don't expect you to answer that right now. I'm just saying those are some of the things that I'd like to, like to discuss. And advanced economic justice? Who comes up with this stuff? You know, it's, just say what it means instead of, you know, I know you didn't, but this is what the state does, and they hide their intentions in these buzzwords. So I'd like to find out exactly what that is. And hiring a consultant, can we pay our own staff to do these things? Our, our staff would easily qualify as experts in this field, so anyway.
I think the planning grant we're going for would actually be a mix of both. We're going, if we proceed with this, we'd be requesting funding both for our own staff time and for a consultant, because the amount of data the state wants to collect is pretty expansive, and we would have to turn this around. Essentially, that assessment needs to be turned around in the next four to six months. And after that assessment's done, then we have to look at the state criteria and try to plug the data from that assessment.
Okay, that's fine. I'd just like to, you know, have, find out, I want to see what it really looks like, because, you know, if we're applying for a grant to hire another consultant for another study that does nothing, then, you know, we've basically just had an opportunity to generate money for something, for nothing. So, you know, maybe we can actually put this thing to use, and I'm hoping, you know, that that's what we'll, we'll end up doing, but I'd like to hear and have input on how that would look, so.
Yes, we can definitely do that after we make it through the initial process. The state is supposed to come back with a more detailed agreement if they accept our initial application.
Any more questions from the board?
No questions.
Any public input on this item?
Hello, morning, board. Morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Patrick, I strongly, my name's Erin McCarrick from Clearlake. I strongly support the board to apply for this grant. Forwarded an email this morning in support of that as well.
Any more questions from the board?
No questions.
Any public input on this item?
Hello, morning board, morning chair, vice chair. Patrick, my name's Erin McCarrick from Clearlake. I strongly support the board to apply for this grant. Forwarded an email this morning in support of that as well. And so to answer part of your question, Supervisor Brown, is what they're looking in equity is communities that are adversely affected by the war on drugs, either higher than usual arrest rates, or families maybe who have lost a parent because they've been incarcerated.
No, I get it. I don't want to, I don't want to resolve it today. I don't want to have that discussion today. I want to have a longer discussion about what it looks like for us. I get it, what, you know, different opinions are as to what it is, but I want to see it, you know, in the language that they have in the grant. I don't want to spend today doing it. I just want to approve the grant application. You know, I appreciate your input on it, but I don't want to have that discussion today.
Okay, that is the wording in the grant, it's the war on drugs. So I strongly support the board to apply for it. I think it'd be great, initially get the ball rolling on this. It would definitely help possibly increase some of the applicants through the planning department, depending on how the funding was used, and that's all.
Thank you. So at this point, what we're looking for is direction. I think board is in favor, obviously.
Applying for it, yeah.
Applying for the grant.
Definitely.
Yeah, of course.
So yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Patrick. We're just looking for consensus on there, right? I don't think we need an emotion.
We need action on that, or?
I didn't see any, I didn't see it as an action item, just direction.
Is there consensus in the board?
Yes.
It's a very simple application process, doesn't require any.
That's a good thing, when March 9th is right around the corner.
Okay, moving forward with our 6.2, our 9:15 a.m. item, Notice of Lean Hearing for David Deetie, 12498 Oak Street, Clearlake Oaks.
My name's Marcus Beltramo. I'm a code enforcement officer within the Community Development Department. Today, we're here for a notice of lean hearing. This is regarding the property located or commonly known as 12498 Oak Street, Clearlake Oaks, California. The property owner is David Deetie. He's deceased. Staff comes before the board here today. Not working. There he goes. Staff is coming here, comes before the board here today, requesting confirmation by the board to prepare and record a notice of lien against the property. In accordance with the Lake County Code, Chapter 13, Section 1343.1, after an abatement action, the enforcement officials shall cause to be prepared and record a notice of lien against the property. In accordance with Chapter 13, Section 1342.1, the board shall hear and consider the account and the proposed assessment. If the board gives confirmation, in accordance with the Lake County Code, Chapter 13, 1343.3, after recordation, the notice of lien shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment role as a special assessment. In accordance with Lake County Code, Chapter 13, Section 1341.1, and Section 1341.2, a notice of assessment was prepared with the required information and mailed via certified mail to the property owners reflected on title per county records and posted on at the property. In addition, the notice of assessment was placed in the Lake County Recorder B and the Lake County News. And there's the exhibits. I just want to show you the photos of the property or the condition of the property when we initially visited it. Pictures were taken on August 20th, 2019. The left picture's the front gate, the right picture's the driveway. The left picture's the, again, of the driveway, and the right picture's the front yard area. As you can see, there's a lot, bags of trash, debris, rubbish. Again, another picture from a different angle of the garbage, the trash, the rubbish, and a picture from inside the house. We entered the house with the Lake County Sheriff. They were doing clearing of the house for squatters, trespassers. Picture of the garage area, another picture of the bedroom area. You can see there was an extreme hoarding situation. Hoarding situations constitute a public nuisance. We determined who the property owner was based upon the grant deed. It was David Deetie. There were two notices of nuisance and orders to abate prepared. The first one was prepared by a prior supervisor who's no longer with the department. Name's Kathy Freeman. That order was prepared on November 14th, 2018. They posted it at the site, and they sent a certified copy via mail to Mr. Deetie's listed addresses with county records. The notice on the right is the notice that I prepared on August 28, 2019. Basically, we alleged issues of trash, rubbish, open outdoor storage, and basically just being a public nuisance in itself. Service of the notice of nuisance in order to abate pursuant to Lake County Code, Chapter 13, Section 13, 6.2, Subdivision A, Subdivision 2. Such notice shall be properly served if a copy thereof is either sent certified mail, registered mail, addressed to every responsible party at the last known address with return receipt requested and posted at the site. We're just basically demonstrating here that we met the requirements. We did constitute proper service. And there's evidence of that service. Certified mailers at the top and the postings at the site. We did try to obtain permission from living heirs, Mr. Deetie. He died in the property. Cindy Milak is his sister. Donna Deetie was his mother. We didn't know if they had any interest in the property, so just to cover our basis, we got them to, or we asked them to sign a right of entry so we could access the property and perform the abatement action. The email on the left is Cindy giving her consent via email. We did send out a blind copy email to the contractor list that was in play at the time. Those lists, those contractors' lists have now been revamped, and we have a new system in place. At the time, we only received two quotes, one from Leonard's Hauling and the second from Coleman Engineering, Environmental Engineering. We went with the lower bid of Leonard's Hauling, and it was for an amount of $2,000. On November 13th, 2019, to cover our basis, we had a warrant signed by a Lake County Superior Court judge in order to allow access onto the property. On November 13th, 2019, in accordance with California Code of Civil Procedure 1822.56, a 24-hour notice was posted at the property. We're just again demonstrating we met the requirements of the state law to enter the property and to perform an abatement action. The abatement work occurred over a long period, a week-long period, starting around November 15th, 2019, to November 22nd, 2019. And now I just want to demonstrate before and after, just to see what it, so you can see what it looks before, and what the work that we did, and what the property looks like after. On the left, you can see the broken fence. Leonard Hauling installed a new gate fence, free of charge. That was not included in his quote. He did that out of the goodness of his heart. Again, you can see the driveway area on the left, that's the before. On the right, that's the after. You can see everything's been cleared out. Again, similar picture. And this is the kitchen area. On the left, you can see all the trash and rubbish. On the right, you can see how it's been cleaned and removed from the property, therefore abating the nuisance issue. There is just a little distinct, or a little added bonus here, I guess you could say. On 11/27/2019, a boat and trailer with trash piled in it was discovered on Stubbs Road, which is around the corner from the property, about a half mile away down. David Deetie was reflected as the registered owner. It was determined that including the boat and the trailer as part of the abatement action was more cost efficient than having the boat and trailer towed under the Ava Program. When it comes to towing boats and trailers, $100 a foot. Leonard, we contracted with Leonard's Hauling to do it for $700, you know, saving the county some money there, approximately $700. Here's just a layout of the fees. The abatement was $18,900. That was for, to clear the property, remove all the rubbish, and to haul it off and dispose of it properly. The boat and trailer was 700. Administrative cost was $116.14 for a total cost of $19,716.14. The fiscal impact, any action taken by the board will result in a notice of lien recorded with the recorder off, county recorder, then delivered to the county auditor to be entered on the assessment role as a special assessment. Thereafter, the amount set forth shall be collected at the same time, again, this is when it's on the, on the assessment role as a special assessment. Thereafter, the amount set forth shall be collected at the same time and the same manner as ordinary county taxes are collected, and shall be subject to the same penalties and interests, and to the same procedures for foreclosure and the sale in case of delinquency as provided for ordinary county taxes and all laws applicable to the levy. Under California Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 2192.1, 3712, and California Government Code, Section 53935, recordation of a special assessment provides priority over all private liens regardless of their creation, including the prior recorded mortgages against the identified real property. I just want to make a point here. In the past, you've approved notice of liens for recordation. I cannot say with any definite information that that information was then caused to be, go to the auditor's office and recorded as a special assessment. And that's why I just want to make clear that after recordation, we will be going to the auditor's office, and they will be putting on the assessment role as a special assessment. That will again, put our lien in a priority position, and also allow us certain privileges if we choose to, if the county chooses to foreclose on the property. Staff recommends the board supervisor confirm the notice of lien in the amount of $19,716.14, and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. Again, after recordation, it shall be delivered to the county auditor.
Okay.
I got something for Anita here.
Couple of questions, yeah, I do too. You said.
One, I have one just process thing here. What I did not do, and I will go back, is swear the folks in before the hearing started.
It isn't necessarily required. I prefer it just because if we're challenged on some of these, and particularly, particularly as involved as this one is, and when your board's finished, if you'd allow, I also have a couple of questions and comments as well.
I definitely will, but what I would like to do is have them sworn in and see if there's anybody in the audience that may be here to testify on this issue. So if you're going to testify on this issue, if there's anybody in the audience, please stand up and be sworn in.
Do you follow my story that this money you're about to give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you don't?
And already gave.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, you may want to inquire of the witness whether he, he will state that all prior comments and remarks that he's made in the course of these proceedings are true and accurate to the best of his knowledge.
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right. Anita, do you want to start or come back to the board? Supervisor Spatte had his up first, so.
I'll defer to my boss.
Go ahead.
I appreciate the cleanup, looking at the pictures before and after. Obviously, whoever lives in that community is probably very appreciative of seeing that change. One house can ruin an entire community, especially if it looks like that. But I'm wondering if you can go back to your totals that add up to 19,000 on the slide, please. Right there. So I'm looking at administrative costs of $116.14, and this is from like 2018, and I just don't believe it.
I understand.
And I think we're shortchanging ourselves on, we should be paid for the hours of service to take on the responsibility of people who don't want to take on their own personal responsibility of owning a house. And so I want to make sure that we don't do that again. We need to say, this is how many hours we spent, this is how much work we had to do, we should be paid for doing your job, for you owning a house that you're not taking care of. And right now, what I'm seeing is that it's all embedded into a lien. I know that I've talked to Andrew multiple times, and I believe he's working on this. That needs to be sent separately as a, as a fine. I don't see fines up there either, I just see the abatements. But those should be sent separately, and I know I've mentioned it multiple times, to go through the Franchise Tax Board, to go through any other ticketing way to get people to feel the sting of not doing something. Now, this is a situation where the gentleman's dead, so you can't really do that, but at the same time, I feel we're shortchanging ourselves, because there's no way we spend $116.14 of the county's money to do the work, the amount of work that was needed to get this all done.
I'd like to comment on that. I had no way of going back and accounting for past work done on the, on this case here without having any information to rely upon. I couldn't produce an accurate accounting, therefore I didn't feel it was fair to estimate or to embellish or speculate as to those costs. We have.
Yeah, I don't think you can. I think you actually have to have that information. You can't guess at it.
And so to, to address the situation with my code enforcement manager, Andy Williams, we've gone back, conducted a review, and we've revamped our procedures. Moving forward, we will be better at this. We will be documenting all our efforts. It'll all be in writing. We'll have supporting documentation for those efforts. So moving forward, we have implemented new practices and procedures. We will have a more accurate cost going forward. The situation will be better in the future.
Perfect. Now, I was going to ask to make sure that we have a new process, but it looks like you've already implemented that, and I appreciate that, because it's not always the same faces in the same chairs, and we want to make sure to have continuity with whatever we're doing and not lose out. But I do appreciate that you only put up there what you can tally up, because we're not allowed to put anything we can't tally up.
And I do want to emphasize, we do share your concerns on that. We do want to get every dollar accounted for so that the county can be reimbursed for their efforts.
Right, thank you.
Supervisor Brown.
Oh, go ahead, Andy. And you will see more of these that have low numbers as we're cleaning up old cases. The newer ones, that number will be much larger. So you said, you used a term a minute ago, and I just want to come back to that foreclosure. That's, we've never foreclosed on a property, so.
I understand.
Is that something we can do?
Under state law, you can foreclose. And as I go into my other presentations, those properties are more applicable to the code, but it does expedite the foreclosure process where a residential vacant property can be foreclosed upon in three years.
Okay.
The issue right now with this property is the taxes are current, so you would have to wait five years for a tax lien sale. This property's going to sit.
Okay, so it's not really a foreclo, oh, wait a minute. If we didn't foreclose, we would have to wait five years?
Yes, for a tax lien sale. So basically, this property will be sitting in the situation it is now for five years unless we initiate foreclosure proceedings under the Revenue and Taxation Code and Government Code.
When did the owner, when did he pass away?
I think it was November 17th of 2018, approximately.
Okay, so it's gone through probate?
No.
So it would have to go through probate before we, we wouldn't be able to foreclose on it until it had gone through that?
Again, that's beyond my scope. I would have to.
It's not beyond hers.
Go ahead, Anita.
No, it's not, thank you. Well, yes, you would, and in future, I'd also caution, when you're getting rights of entry, don't assume because they're a relative, they have the authority to let you onto property. That is a mistake. And the ability to foreclose on a lien has always been available to your board. I understand about walking it through as a special assessment, but the code, the Chapter 13 makes it a special assessment, so it has always been. Also, even in regard to liens, be aware that, yes, they can happen, but they're not necessarily simple. The law is full of many variables when it comes to people's properties, particularly when it's a residential, it's their home property, because the law tends to protect that. So there are a number of things that have to be looked at. The one question I had, and I looked at the materials and didn't see it, so I'm sure they can confirm this for your board. They mentioned an abandoned vehicle. I'm assuming the vehicle was part of the warrant that the court approved, because that would have been the way you could take it.
So first, I'd like to address that we did get the rights to entry signed by the living heirs, but we also executed.
I need you to speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. We also executed a warrant.
Can you talk in and speak?
I'm sorry, we also.
Yes, I heard, I heard that, Mr. Chair.
She can hear you when you're looking this way, but you just can't see her eyes rolling.
I understand.
That's the only advantage to her.
My eyes weren't rolling. All I'm, all I'm suggesting is a caution.
Oh, it's just me you do that to?
Not just you, but often you. The right of entry is, has to be, also be exercised cautiously. I understand there was a warrant issued, which gave rise to my other question about the boat that was removed, to ensure that the boat was specifically listed in the warrant issued. issued by the court.
Can you add to that question?
So the boat was discovered after the abatement was completed, and we tagged it and documented under the AVO program. That just the cost of the towing of the boat was added to the abatement because it was more cost efficient. And that was a determination made by the supervisor at that time.
Okay. So, then I had a couple of other, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm, I'm really happy that we've got some, some new direction to go to this, but it sounds like we still have to, to come up with a game plan on how to move forward because I think there's going to be a ton of these. And I think working with counsel is going to be very helpful in, in a lot of respects. But, you know, the foreclosure part of it, it's a little, it's tricky. And I've gone through this probate, in fact, I'm helping a friend right now going through this, so I'm learning a lot from it. But one of the things that we want to be careful about with the foreclosure is, ideally, someone else buys the property and in escrow, they pay us out of that. That's the easiest way, cleanest way, pay their taxes, whatever, however it works. But we get paid that way. If we do it through foreclosure and we get stuck with the property and then we have to turn around and try to sell it, then we got to calculate all the, the excess and figure out where it goes and all that because unjust enrichment occurs and you can't, can't get involved in that. So I'm, I'm glad that we're doing these and I'm glad to see a bunch of them on here. And that was going to be my other question. There's a lot of areas that you're covering here, the language on the codes and all that, and maybe when we get to that, we could just say we've already covered that.
I think that's, I think that's fair.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any more comments from the board?
No, I just, just that I appreciate that, like Supervisor Brown said, that there's a lot of them on our agenda.
Yeah.
I'm excited that we're doing this.
I'm even more excited there in my district.
Yeah.
For sure, yeah. But I think too, Brian Brown, one of the most important things he said was always, with your department, obviously, working with county council, making sure we're having everything done and check it out, that we, we can have this process so it's as airtight as possible as we move forward with this. So communication with the departments, especially county council, is very important.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
Yes. Any more from the board?
I do have one question because of what was brought up with the boat situation, wondering if in our motion, we can make a caveat to check in with the, the county council's office and if it's, if there's enough strength to say, yes, this is supported, to take the boat with everything that you have in documentation, then add the 700. If there's not enough strength, maybe bring it back to us so we can drop the 700 because I don't want to create a situation where we can be told that we, we did this wrong and now that this, all this work was for nothing. I want to make sure that the lien is a strong lien that we can support, so that, that would be my suggestion with the amendment. But I do appreciate the work that was done and trying to do more than what you were asked to do on that property, and especially the, the name matches, but-
It looked, it looks great. I mean, the pictures are, I think, it's amazing how much work they did, yeah.
All right, any more from the board? All right, we'll open this up, item up for public input. Any public input on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
So Mr. Chair, I'll confirm the special assessment of $19,716.14 and direct staff to record a special assessment lien against the property. The cost of abatement services was $18,900. The administrative cost in this case amounted to $116.14. And the caveat with the 700 is that-
If you agree with me.
Yes, I, I agree with doing it the way that Bruno stated earlier.
So your motion just includes to, to have a conference with county council's office to ensure the 700 was appropriately charged? And if not, bring it back?
As stated by county council.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Thank you. We'll go ahead and start out again, obviously, for item 6.3, Notice of lien hearing, Robert Coell. Witnesses should be sworn, oh, I apologize. I don't, I know.
Mr. Chair, just for, for efficiency sake, since the department's already been sworn, you'll just have to swear any witnesses who may appear.
Are there any witnesses here for this item? Item 6.3. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward.
And again, this, some of this is, information will be redundant, so to appease the board, we'll just kind of go through it real quick. Again, staff is requesting confirmation by the board to prepare and record a notice of The notice, the set, the notice of assessments were mailed out to the property owners and also posted in the Lake County Recorder B and Lake County News. There's proof of the assessment posted at the property and mailed via certified mail and the postings in the local publications, the photos. So the property is a vacant lot, an R1. There is no primary structure on the lot. All that was on the lot was this shed. Inside the shed and surrounding the shed is garbage and rubbish and trash. The major concern for the citizens in this neighborhood were that people were going into the shed, using it for drug purposes, leaving needles in there. Kids were playing on the vacant lot, and that was a major concern for the local community there, the Gardner Street, Gardner Road community. And there you see, there's trash all around the outside there. Another major concern is the brush. There is an older, elderly senior citizen living in the house, on the right picture there, you can see there. Citizens were concerned for his safety. Several senior citizens, citizens expressed concerns that they didn't like to go on vacation because they feared that this lot would go up in fire, the brush would ignite, and they couldn't get peace of mind when they went on vacation. So two things was to clean up the rubbish, the trash, and to clear the lot of any potential fire hazards. Again, those are pictures of the brush. Apparently, the, what the citizens explained is that people would come to this lot, dump their brush on the lot and leave it. So it became a dump site for brush and hazardous materials or combustible materials. We determined the property from the grantee, it was a Robert Coell. There were two notice of nuisance in order to abate, one by my, the prior supervisor, Kathy Freeman. And then a year later, I came around and issued a new notice so that way we could evidence the existing conditions on the property. The notices were posted at the property in accordance with the county code. They were mailed via certified mail, meeting both prongs of the code there for proper service. We even mailed out a final notice via certified mail to the property at its known address listed with county records. The property tax bill reflects, there were delinquent property taxes from 2011 to 2018. This information reasonably indicates the property owner has abandoned the property. The tax collector has the power to sell the property. Per their office and my conversations with them, they have a power to sell, but it has not been reported. We, again, we sent out a blind email to the contractor list at the time. Again, that list has been revamped. We only, we got two bids, one from Leonard's Hauling, the other from Coleman Environmental Engineering. Again, we went with Leonard's quote there. The abatement action started on November 26th. We had a warrant signed by a Lake County Superior Court Judge. November 27th, we posted the 24-hour notice in accordance with state law, and the abatement work occurred after Thanksgiving of 2019. Before and afters, there's the shed. We took the shed down, therefore alleviating the potential issue of attractive nuisance also, so drug users could not go in there and use it for drug purposes. There's the picture of the brush. There's the after picture where the brush has been cleared. Another picture of the brush where the brush has been cleared. The cost, the abatement was $2,000. Administrative cost, again, $116.14. Total cost of the abatement was $2,116.14. Again, redundant information about how, after recordation of the notice of lien, if given confirmation by the board, shall be entered in, or gone over to the auditor's office and entered in on the assessment roll as a special assessment. Again, information. The one thing I did not bring into my last presentation is Government Code 38773.5. It authorizes that the lien is not paid within three years. A city or county may foreclose on non-residential and vacant residential properties. The property here may be considered a vacant residential property. Again, staff is recommending the board supervisors give confirmation to record, for the notice of lien in the amount of $2,116.14 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property.
Any questions for the board?
I have, I have two questions. On, you said it was in an R1 lot?
Yeah.
On R1, nothing's allowed on there if there's no house, right?
My understanding from our planners, who are the expert in this field, is that R1, this primary purpose of the lot is for a single-family dwelling or a single-family dwelling residential unit. If the property does not have a single-family residential unit, the policy of the department has been that there can be nothing on the lot.
Yeah.
You cannot have storage because storage is, in order to have storage, you have to have the primary use. So basically, the position of the policy of the Community Development Department is you cannot have anything on the lot. The shed in this situation is an accessory structure. By definition, accessory to, would be, is something to the primary.
Something that's not there.
Yeah.
Right, no, and I appreciate that, or else people end up using their lots as storage when it's in a residential neighborhood. So I just kind of wanted to make that be known to the public, that if you have a residential lot, you can use it other than having a, build a house on there, and then you can have some of those accessory structures, and then you can park your vehicle there and stuff like that. So I appreciate that. The second one is, you're asking us to direct staff to record notice of lien and so on. I'd like to direct staff, if possible, through this board to make sure that you send all properties that you find are tax defaulted by five-plus years that we're having to spend time and money and energy on directly to the tax collector's office as a high priority property to be put on the next tax auctions. Doesn't mean it's going to happen, but at least we can provide them with the list as we're doing the work rather than working in silos separately and not knowing that we're putting all this energy into it. So that, that would be my extra suggestion on top.
All right. Any more questions for the board? We don't, go ahead, Rob. Supervisor Brown.
Shouldn't that be agendized to give action for that? That's pretty substantial. That's not just, in addition to. I think that's a policy change that, that I'd like to ask. I don't, I don't disagree with you on that.
And, and I don't mind an agendized item.
But in, in the, in light of the conversations that we've had with other municipalities in the county, it'd be a policy change that, that may affect that, so.
Anita, do you?
I, I think the board can indicate that that might be their intention going forward, but for substantive discussion, it's, it's better as an agenda item.
We'll work with Anita and bring it back. And, you know, the bigger discussion is, they can do that, but there's no, there's nothing to say that, that they'll do it. You know, so.
No, it's just about sharing information. That's what I'm looking for. And I'll work with Anita Grant to get this as a agenda item for future.
All right, excellent. And there's no one from the owner to testify on this, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to confirm the assessment of $2,116.14 and direct staff to record a notice of special assessment lien against the property. The cost of abatement services was $2,000. The administrative cost on this case amounted to $116.14.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right, thank you. Moving on to item 6.4, Notice of lien hearing, Kathleen and James Mooney at the address of 2810 Merced Street, Nies, California. Is there anyone here to testify on behalf of the owner? Needs to be sworn in. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward with the hearing.
Okay. Again, there's going to be some redundant information again. I do want to state that the property or James Mooney is deceased. Kathleen Mooney is living. Again, staff is requesting confirmation by the board to prepare and record a notice of lien against the property. After the abatement action, the enforcement officials shall cause him to be prepared and record a notice of lien. Again, we will go over to the auditor's office after, after recordation and have the information entered on the assessment roll as a special assessment. The proper notice of assessment was sent out. It was mailed, certified mailed and posted at the property. Also was posted in Lake County Recorder B and Lake County News. These documents are evidence of that fact. Photos before the abatement. It was a manufactured home, and what happened is, one night, Ms. Mooney explained the situation to me one night while she was there with her boyfriend, a tree fell on the manufactured home. As you can see, it caved it in there on the side there. On the right photo, if you could see, the backside of the unit is coming off, and that insulation materials are blowing around the neighborhood, which is the major concern for the people living in that neighborhood, as, as well as addition being an eyesore. The other issue, there were trespassers squatters using the unit for drug purposes and other nefarious purposes. Again, here's a close-up of it so you can see it a little better. This is the other side of the property. I believe Ms. Mooney said she had not been in the property for approximately three, four years. Grant, we used the grantee to identify the property owners, James Mooney and Kathleen Mooney. Notice of nuisance in order to abate was issued, posted at the property and mailed to Ms. Mooney's last known address. We served the notice of nuisance in order to abate in accordance with the county code, meeting both prongs, sending it by certified mail and posting it at the property. We were able, after extensive efforts, we were actually able to locate Ms. Mooney, and I sat down with her, had a conversation with her. She explained the story to me. I explained to her the action that the county wanted to take, what the abatement action would be or what it would entail. She agreed. She signed a permission to enter and abate. We gave her ample time to remove any belongings she wanted from the property, gave her proper, a week's notice before entering the property to do the abatement action. She was well aware that we were going to do a demo. This was a demo abatement. Property tax information reflects delinquent property taxes from 2015 to 2018. 2019 are not posted with the tax collector yet, therefore that's not included in the Before we can do any demolition work, we have, Lake County air quality requires us to get an asbestos test. So we had to send out quotes or do the bidding process to get an asbestos test done. Adams Laboratory was awarded the quote or the contract. It was determined the property did have asbestos, so on top of materials, insulation blowing around the neighborhood, there was also asbestos. The cost of the testing for the asbestos was $850. On November 10th, 2019, a warrant was signed by a Lake County Superior Court Judge in order to allow access to the property. On December 13th, we posted the 24-hour notice in accordance with California Code of Civil Procedure. This is just a picture of the asbestos being removed. This is a picture of the demolition, and this is the before and after. So on the left, you see the unit where the tree had caved it in. On the right is what the lot looks like today. The abatement costs, the demolition work cost $18,475. The asbestos test was $850. The administrative cost was $116.14 for a total of $19,441.14. Again, action taken by the board will result in a notice of lien recorded with the county recorder's office, then delivered to the county auditor, be entered on the assessment roll as a special assessment. Basically, same redundant information. Again, California code allows the county, if it does choose so, to foreclose on the property if not paid within three years. This property may be considered a vacant residential property, meeting that requirement. Staff recommends the board supervisor, board supervisors confirm the notice of lien in the amount of $19,441.14 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. Thereafter, it shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount on the assessment roll as a special assessment.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just wanted to make two comments. Number one, thank you so much for all the work that you do, because when I go through these agenda items, I see the whole story. The amount of attachments that you place on there shows that you're keeping good files, keeping good paperwork of what's going on. I see the whole story, so I just want to share that appreciation. Also, we're seeing the costs, and this is more to the public, we're seeing the cost of these abatements, they're averaging about $20,000. We started the year with $100,000 for abatements. That would be maybe five abatements. We just did $200,000 in the mid-year budget. That would be maybe 10 more abatements. So you can see the cost, and, and it's difficult to be able to afford these, but I'm happy to see them happening, so thank you.
All right. All right. Now that we don't have any others from the property, go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
These were budgeted prior.
Yeah.
And yeah, so, yeah.
Good.
And I think they'll be recovered. I think there's a good strategy here, so.
Excellent. All right, so we'll go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to confirm the assessment of $19,441.14 and direct staff to record a notice of special assessment lien against the property. The cost of abatement services was $18,470 plus $850. The administrative cost of this case amounted to $116.14.
Second.
All right, there's a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving right along to our 9:45 a.m., 6.5, Discussion of Cannabis Tax Revenue and Accrual Methodology and B, a Report from County Council on Proration of Cannabis Cultivation Taxes.
So Patrick Sullivan, our tax administrators, returning for the initial portion of this.
Good morning again. Patrick Sullivan, tax administrator. I'm here to provide a report first on the proration issue, if the board would like me to proceed with that.
Yes.
All right. So essentially, there's two major issues regarding the matter of proration. Proration, one, it's important to clarify, seemed to have meant different things to different people, so I'll just explain some background on how that term has been applied in the tax program. When people initially receive their permit, whatever year that was, that's when this matter comes up. This was the only time that bills were adjusted. What would be reflected was either the actual date of the permit issuance, or after the resolution the board did earlier last year, the date of actual cultivation that was declared. And what it basically boils down to is that taxes only accrued from that date forward. So if you were to look at it on a continuum from January 1st to December 31, just as an example, if someone were to have received their permit or declared their cultivation start date as the last day of the year, they would have been charged for one day. They wouldn't have been charged any tax going back further in the year. Or if they had received it halfway through the year, declared their cultivation start date, at that point, they would have been charged half of that year's taxes. Going forward, every consecutive year, everyone is charged the full year's tax. There's no more proration, no adjustments made, except for the declaration of non-cultivation, which growers and cultivators would be eligible for this year, as long as you were declared by June 1st that you were not intending to cultivate and that you had not engaged in any activity during this year, you would not be held accountable for the taxes for this annual assessment. So, yeah, essentially, it's the first year so far that this has occurred, and if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
When reading Measure C and understanding how the farming practice of cannabis works, if you're going to grow an acre and just to keep it in simple numbers and you can make a million dollars off of an acre, if you get your permit in March and you don't have to pay for the first three months because you got your permit in March, so it's prorated the first year, they're still going to make their million dollars off their acres. So my belief is, if they harvest one year, they should be paying a dollar a square foot for the square footage of their harvest that they do for the year. Because nobody's going to grow in January, nobody's going to grow in February, nobody's going to grow in December. This is a seasonal tax of a harvest, not a, it's a dollar a square foot. If you do an acre, it's, what, 46,500 square feet, something like that? It shouldn't be slowly, we increment it up by day. We don't divide 46,500 by 365. That's my belief on how the tax is. It's meant to be a dollar per square foot for the harvesting of the plant, not on a how many days are you doing it? We have the opt-out now. We have a, they tell us when they're going to plant, so if they get their, if they get their license on December 30th, they're not going to harvest that year. I don't think we should tax somebody for something they didn't do. That's not the way taxes should work. But they will now have paperwork that says, I will start production and planting as of April 1st, May 1st, June 1st, whatever it is that they say on their paperwork, and that's when we can start accruing the taxes, meaning your full square footage at a dollar a square foot if you're doing outdoor, would be accruing at that point. But in my opinion, they should be paying the full amount, no matter when they get their license. If they're doing a harvest, they're doing a harvest, and they're getting their full profit out of it, and we're not getting the full profit out of it from what the voters voted on for Measure C. So I see it as we, we say we have about 1.3 million. I think we should have more because of how we've been doing this. And I want to make sure that there's a follow-up, that we're also asking for the second payment. I looked at a lot of them, and I don't know if it's because they started in June, so it only looked like they did half a payment out of the entire year. But again, I know that those people were able to harvest their square footage, and if they did, then they gained everything that they would gain on a yearly basis, and we gained 50% of what we should have gained in that year. So my opinion is that the way it reads, the way I look at it, it's if you're doing a harvest, that means you're going to get the maximum capacity of the square footage you're growing. If you're not doing a harvest, then you shouldn't pay your taxes, because you shouldn't be taxed on something you're not doing. So I just feel like we're not getting the full benefit of Measure C the way that we are rolling it out.
And I think the scenario that you're bringing up does indicate a shortcoming of the current methodology, because someone would be able to potentially bring a full harvest and pay a reduced tax rate. I think the difficulty in why this methodology was adopted from the beginning was finding a one-size-fits-all approach, trying to find a rule that would adapt to every situation is difficult due to the nature of our ordinance. Other jurisdictions that have a gross receipts ordinance, you're just looking at it as it comes in. So if someone's growing and making essentially a profit or bringing in revenue, you're taxing that. It is more difficult with the nature of our ordinance to, to address these periods of inactivity. That being said, because we changed the billing cycle, and we are doing it, applying in a retroactive manner now, if the board did wish to change the policy or this program, this would be the optimal time to do it, because we haven't issued those next sets of bills. And we're going to have to catch all the people that were issued permits later last year in the second half of the year. They're going to be picked up this time. People are going to be getting their regular annual installment. So this next billing cycle is essentially kind of pushing the reset button on how we're doing things. So if there were to be changes, it would be best to make them at this time.
And I'm making an assumption that the growers, knowing it's a dollar a square foot, are expecting to pay a dollar per square foot for the 46,500 square feet that they would grow if they had an acre. I don't think they ever expected a proration. I'm sure they're not complaining if they got prorated, but I don't think that that was the expectation. And I'm making an assumption.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
Any more discussion from the board?
Just that I would like to agree with Supervisor Sabatier. I think we definitely have to have a mechanism in place that if you're not growing, you have the opportunity not to pay your taxes, because I don't feel you should be paying on something you're not growing. But if you are growing, you need to be paying the full taxes on, on that grow.
Suggested, suggested fix or is there any language?
We would have to, I would probably appreciate the opportunity to meet with the tax collector's office and review this methodology. Would probably require a change to the proposed billing cycle we are currently doing. I don't know if the board intends a cutoff date. For instance, with the, the declaration of non-cultivation, the date that was come up with was June 1st, that by June 1st, you had to declare that you had not engaged in any cultivation activity, which is pretty broadly defined under our ordinance. That can range from working with seeds to drying, trimming. It's basically no activity. You said, I haven't done that so far this year, and I'm not going to do it the rest of the year. That's the way that one was addressed. So I don't know if the board's seeking to tag something to a deadline like that, if there's a cutoff date you're looking for, because otherwise, I do realize, we could end up with a situation of someone getting a permit in December, let's say, and being held accountable for the beginning of the year when they weren't able to operate. And I don't know if it's the intention to charge taxes going back before they were in operation.
Nita.
The only thing that I would, I would say, and Patrick and I have discussed this, and your board has made certain clarifications through resolutions, opt-out is one of them, the fact the tax should only accrue at the point that you're engaged in, in collections. And I think the, the prorata approach has been employed, first and foremost, because of the nature of this tax, which was done quite some time ago, and also just based upon past practice. The, the difficulty becomes is that it doesn't really have a corresponding application. For example, property tax. Property tax accrues on January 1 of every year. It doesn't matter what you're doing on the property, it just, that's what it accrues. And if you've got a house on the property, it doesn't matter if you're living in it, it just matters that you have a house on the property. So some of that proration in terms of ownership and property tax don't have a real correlation to this. And I think when you're talking about the, the potential of just an annual tax, if you're going to do that, I would suggest you might not want to be too concerned about someone who starts cultivation in December. It, it's just like anything else. If you have a benefit that you can cash out, you might not cash it out in December, you might cash it out in January, so that it's not on a particular tax year. People make decisions about what they do all the time. I think that, what I'd suggest is, if your board can give some, some general standards of exactly what you want to see, to allow staff to kind of work with the numbers to see what comes closest to what your board is talking about. That way, you don't end up with, well, you could solve it this way, it looks good on paper, but then in application, uh-oh, that leaves a big hole. You may want staff to come back to you with a concrete proposal in the next week or so, based upon the direction your board gives today.
Okay. Supervisor Brown.
So, and I realize it is different than the property tax, but it would make it simpler, wouldn't it, to have it coincide with that, payment of property tax? Why wouldn't we want to make it any more difficult for us, as well as others, to remember dates? Just, it's the date, the date, same date as property taxes. It's a biannual, it's, it is biannual, right? Yeah, so why not? Why not just have that date and make things simpler as far as the dates go?
I can say from conversations with the tax collector's office, they get so swamped during those property tax weeks. They were, I think, originally hoping to avoid that overlap.
Okay, well, and I, and I appreciate that, but they're dealing with, you know, tens of thousands of properties. We're dealing with dozens. Maybe, do we have 100? I mean, will, do we anticipate that? See, that's, it's not that, that complicated, and there's 30 days after the due date for them to pace it, a 30-day window. And I, I do appreciate the fact that, I don't think there's an easy day. There's some that are harder than most up there for them, but there's not an easy day for us to set. And I think by making it easy for them for a date other than the dates of property taxes is just going to make it more complicated for everyone else. So I think, for the sake of simplification, let's just, let's just stick to those, those dates. I don't know why we would complicate it more by, by going to a different schedule. Then you got four dates instead of two, to pay taxes that are, that are to be paid at the tax collector's office, so.
And I have zero issues with the dates. I'm, I'm not trying to complicate the process by adding more dates. I think it should coincide. It's biannual. These growers are paying biannually. I just think that in the paperwork they are receiving now, because I know we made a change, it says when they plan to grow, and it also allows them to phase in, let's say they're doing 10 acres, it allows them to phase in their acres, and it's all written somewhere. And so at that point, we just say, look, you're growing 46,500 square feet, we're going to multiply that by one, divide it by two, boom, here's what your bill is going to be, and tag those bills on with the tax collector for property taxes. But I just think that doing a prorating, we're not receiving the amount of money that the people voted on that we should be receiving to be able to help our community rise in the way that we should be able to. I just think that we're, we're not, we're, we're allowing ourselves to not collect something, and I don't think we should be in a position to say that's okay not to collect.
And so, just to make sure I'm understanding that direction right, if a cultivator were wanting to, if they did not believe they could cultivate or get their crop in in the manner they would want, in, let's say, this year, they would need to push their start date into the following year to begin, otherwise they would be subject to the full annual tax. If, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this.
Which I believe we already have with the non-op, correct?
Mm-hmm. That is the methodology for the non-operation. So it would be essentially squaring it up to that process.
Yes.
Okay.
And setting the date, like Supervisor Brown talked about. So we'd have no issue with the date.
No issue with the date. I just want all the money.
Exactly, I agree. If you're growing, then you should be paying the full tax.
So we'll look to have you bring that portion back to us here.
Yes.
Clarification.
Happy to do that.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion?
Well, just, just real quick. I mean, this, you know, we're talking about some vagueness in the ordinance, and I think you do that intentionally for, for some purposes, so you can have some room. But this is, this is not, this is kind of specific. Just because, just because you don't actually have the plants in the ground doesn't mean you haven't started the process.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what it says here. You know, you get, cultivation doesn't say anything about having the plant in the ground before you're actually in the process of cultivation. It's grading, it's putting in your irrigation, there's a lot of people that do that kind of stuff. And then for whatever reason, they don't have enough money to follow through, they wait till the next year, whatever. But in the meantime, there's a, there's a process that they've begun, so that's, they need to figure that out.
Well, I think I have enough for direction on that portion of the discussion.
Okay, all right.
Excellent.
I know the board also asked us to come back with information about the revenues accumulated so far and what was comfortable being spent, so I can address that now if that's appropriate.
Any more questions from the board?
No.
All right, we'll go ahead.
I, I will.
On this item, because we went to B first, going to have to, you know, what we do is get some public input on this.
I just want to make one last comment in a bit of a rebuttal to what Supervisor Brown just said, because cultivation is clearly defined in the tax measure itself as germinating, cloaking, seed production, planting, growing and harvesting of cannabis plants, and the onsite drying, curing, grading or trimming of cannabis plants. It doesn't stay about preparing for your land.
What is grading? You don't grade plants.
You just said grading.
No, but you, you.
I said grading. Grading is included in there. Grading to plant is part of cultivation. You don't, you don't grade marijuana.
I didn't say grading.
Yeah, she did.
I didn't see that in there. I would be careful, because I know that we were taxing somebody who's in a two-year process to build out the entire indoor facility in Kelseyville, and that was one of the reasons that we brought that, saying we can't.
I didn't put the language in there. I'm just saying that we have to enforce it. That's what, that's the way it reads. If you don't want it, it should be changed, but it would probably have to be changed by, by ballot, so, because it's pretty substantial. There's a lot of grading that's going on, that's, that's part of the enforcement, that's part of, most of our, our costs are enforcement of illegal grading, so I think it's in there for a reason.
All right. I'll look to see what Patrick brings back to us.
Excellent. All right, any public input on this item?
And I would like to qualify that, I'm not saying illegal grading by those who are getting the permits.
Yeah.
It's illegal grading from those who didn't, but unfortunately, those that are doing it right have to pay to enforce against those that are doing it wrong, so.
Right, right, right.
When it says grading right there.
If you could give us your name, please.
Mike Mittsle. But grading in that is talking about sorting. If you listen to what that says in that, it's the grading as in like separating it out.
Did you write the ordinance?
But listen to the, how it goes.
That's your definition.
Dacking, trimming, grading, it's not grading the land is what was in there. I was involved in writing the ordinance, I was here, I gave public comment multiple times on it, but it's talking about sorting, so I don't feel like that's really the grading that they're talking about, but.
That's what you think it is.
Yeah, it's my opinion, so. But with the tax, I feel like you guys are gonna, you're not really going to end up collecting more tax on it, right? You're just going to end up with people not early activating it and not paying the tax till the next year, where like if you're, you're going through your early activation, you have your permit and you're waiting for, to be early activated, let's say that you get it in June or July, people are just not going to activate that permit if it's, their season is cut short. Like last year, there was a lot of people that put in late crops, were rushing to get early activated, and they paid their tax starting late, like even August, I worked on some grows that early activated very late in the year. And they probably wouldn't have activated if they had to pay And they probably wouldn't have activated if they had to pay the full tax. Like, you guys are already getting a lot from the weed growers, like, maybe not trying to squeeze every last little penny out of them at this point, like, in looking at, it's actually bringing people in, there's a lot of jobs getting created, like, there's other benefits besides just the direct dollar-square-foot tax that, I don't know. I mean, I get where you guys are coming from on it, but like, on a greenhouse harvest, you are harvesting five times a year, so there is like a direct effect, it's not just one harvest that you start. So like my property in Kelseyville, if we're done building it in October, right, I would, why shouldn't I be able to start and just pay the tax for the remainder of that year? Because I'm really not going to benefit the whole time from it. There's like a lot of instances where what you're saying doesn't really work, so, I feel like the prorated is a good, it works. It's like she said, it's, you can't really solve every problem, but that's a pretty good way to do it. You pay your tax for the days you actually grow. I don't know, I think you're going to end up not really collecting more tax money if you change it, so, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Michael Green, I agree with the last speaker. If it's not broke, don't fix it. Probation, to the extent it does happen, is an initial year only. I would say if you were to propose to do anything, I'd get, I put some numbers behind it. Let's see exactly how much tax we're quote-unquote losing by the application of proration. County Council prepared a staff report that clarified that we can't tax those early months anyway, until they start cultivating, there's no tax anyway. So, the example of March is one, but you can use another example of June or August. You know, the law of unintended consequences says if you stick to your guns and say, we're going to hit everybody whether they plant in March, or August, or September, you will see more non-op. So, as a result of your policy, you could actually end up seeing less tax revenue from those initial permities than you would otherwise. Grading, by the way, in the context of that ordinance, does occur to grading of the product, grade A, grade B, grade C, there's an agricultural context to that. So, you can't legally impose the tax until the cultivation commences. Those permities that are kind of caught in the middle of a growing season, they're not going to get full value if they do plant in the summer anyway. So, to the extent you do possibly have the perception that you're losing some tax, again, you have startup businesses in the initial year of their permit, if they're willing to go ahead and start up operations in that first year, and pay that prorated portion of the tax, that's a win-win. And then it's already been clarified that in any subsequent tax year, you're going to get the full value of that tax. So, I'd say if it's not broke, don't fix it. If you are going to try to fix it, try to quantify the problem before you propose a fix. Thank you.
Lance Williams, I won't comment about a lot of these things, but I will comment that it took a while for me to get the early activation last year. It was, I think, after October 15th, and so I can't grade after October 15th anyways.
Yeah, you can. If the conditions are right, there are exemptions to that.
Yeah, there are exemptions, but again, most people in this county can't grade after that date. And it was really too late for me to do anything, and I am very thankful that I did not get taxed, and they gave me a start date for the next year. So, I would like you to consider that to some degree, that, that we would want a plant date for some of us that can get activated in that situation. I'm outdoor, I'm not a greenhouse. If it was a greenhouse, maybe it might be a little different. It still might be cold, and maybe they would not plant. But in a case where you are outdoor, I would like some kind of start date that could be moved with a plant date, because that, but I'm not asking that that plant date is prorated either. I just don't want to be charged for the year behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Okay, let's bring it back to a discussion of cannabis tax revenue and a cool methodology.
So, the last time your board did ask for a projection of how much revenue could be spent as part of, for instance, the grant, mini-grant program that was discussed, at this time, staff would feel comfortable with a $500,000 recommendation concerning the amount of revenue that could be spent in that manner. That's just looking at the total amount of revenue that's come in and possible other demands, that's what staff would currently feel comfortable with. So, if the board had any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any more questions? Any more questions from the board? Excellent. Any public input on this item?
My name is Carla Ritz, I'm the Executive Director for First Five, and I'm never quite sure if this is the right time or not, so I'm going to bring this comment, you can let me know if I'm speaking to the wrong issue, but yesterday I got together a group of colleagues from Public Health, Behavioral Health, WIC, Lake County Office of Education, North Coast Opportunities, Redwood Community Services, and Lake Family Resource Center, some of whom are with me today, to discuss the opportunities that exist in our community that would align with the intent of the general tax on the cannabis cultivation in Lake County. We are all so grateful for the foresight of this board in using, in adding the wording, additional education programs for county youth relating to drug and alcohol use, to the funding intent of our local ordinance. Thank you so much for that foresight. After our conversation, the group asked that I convey the following to your board. First, we ask that you would please consider a broader understanding of the language included in the ordinance related to the intended use of the tax revenue. When Prop 64 passed at the state level, language is included throughout that proposition emphasizing child and youth health and safety that went beyond education, and called for revenues to be partially used to emphasize accurate education, effective prevention, early intervention, school retention, and timely treatment services for youth, their families, and caregivers. Secondly, we know from the State of Our Children report that Lake County has significantly higher rates of substance use diagnosis of pregnant women than the, than the state average, and that between 29 and 40% of Lake County ninth graders reported current drug or alcohol use in the last year, depending on high school they attended. Because of this, we would like to advocate for a meaningful portion of the county's cannabis cultivation tax revenue to go toward prevention and early intervention efforts prenatally through age 18. Specifically, the group would like the board to consider 25% of the revenue received to go toward these efforts. Lastly, rather than creating individual mini-grants to distribute those funds, which could lead to siloing of efforts, the group would like the board to consider creating a next-generation fund for Lake County, where those revenues could be set aside, and to authorize the Lake County Children's Council to serve as the governing body on how those funds are spent in alignment with the board's eligibility criteria. The Lake County Children's Council has been in existence since 1992. It's made up of representatives from the County Office of Education, local districts, East Center WIC, the County Departments of Public Health, Behavioral Health, Social Services, and Probation, Easter Seals, tribal representatives, Child Care Planning Council members, local health agencies, Lake Family Resource Center, North Coast Opportunities, Redwood Community Services, First Five Lake, and even others. And those meetings are held in the interest of the health and well-being and safety of Lake County's children. Meetings of the council are already held quarterly, they're open to the public. Oh, can I finish my sentence?
Yep.
Okay. And we believe that having this group jointly make decisions about the best collaborative use of next-generation fund dollars would be the best way to ensure a community-wide approach toward prevention and early intervention, and would set our community up to be able to draw down matching philanthropic dollars to double the impact to further positive outcomes for our children.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
You had it up from last time?
No, that's right. I just wanted to say I thank you for bringing it up to us, that $500,000 is what we feel is comfortable with going and putting out there. I'm open for the mini-grant, and because of the fact that it does say education, I would like to see how, without creating too many open doors, how can we work with our local educators and our schools, where we don't open it to everybody that wants to try and get a mini-grant from us as well? That would be, I'm not quite sure how that would function, or if that education would solely go through Behavioral Health and SUDs and things like that, I'm not sure. But I definitely, it's something that was voted on by the voters for the education portion, and I want to make sure we don't forget that part.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, as I said at the last meeting, I agree with that, and I'd like to see, because, you know, we're, and I appreciate what they're doing, and I appreciate the new leadership there, and the thought that they put into this, but we've got, we've got our own, the impacts of our own plant that we're trying to operate. And so, we need to make sure that all those are taken care of, and the education and all that, like I said before, you know, I'd like to have some input from our staff, like Behavioral Health and some others, to see, you know, the AODS and all that, and I just, you know, I probably, this is probably the time to stay quiet, but I can't. So, when we were having this discussion, these five concerns that they have, and I, again, I don't mean any disrespect, because I know the people that are laying this out weren't, most of them weren't here at the time, but these concerns that you have about maternal cannabis use, will decrease IQ, all the things that happened in Colorado, all that, these are all things that I brought up when I had opposition to this, and begged to exercise caution. No one else, no one that's concerned now that wants money was concerned then, and so now, ironically, you know, if you go up and get a marriage license on the second floor, part of your marriage license fee goes to domestic violence, and I find that ridiculous, but it's no more ridiculous than this, where we encourage an industry that causes harm to our youth so that we can generate money to pay for the harm that it does. And I resent that, I just, I can't believe that we're, we're actually at a point in our society where we think something's okay, just so we can generate money to take care of the problems that we recognize that exist because of it. So, that's my, that's my soapbox.
Thank you very much. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, what we envisioned doing was coming back to you at a future agenda, and Patrick, I'll defer to you on timeline for that, but where we develop a draft of what this mini-grant program would look like, what the criteria would be for it, et cetera. And so, Patrick, I don't know if you have a timeline in mind, but, but the other thing I wanted to say is that there's also considerable state funding available, and there's a new round of, a new application round that will come up, and so could you talk about that a little bit too, Patrick?
Yeah, I can address some of the state funding that's going to be coming through. There's a few different programs that are funded out of the cannabis tax collected by the state. Approximately 60% of the discretionary state funding is intended to go to youth education, prevention, and treatment for drugs. So, a lot of what's been discussed is actually available, there's funding sources that are going to be made available to community groups. One round of that funding, the application opened in January, it unfortunately closed last month. I, I don't know if any local groups applied for that. There is another round coming in probably the next month or two. But, an interesting note about these programs, from what I've seen, is that, while the amount of money they offer is generally pretty large, some of them is up to a million dollars, you're not allowed to supplant existing funding, they're more geared towards creating new programs. So, if local groups were going to be applying for this money in the spring, if, if it's a program the county already has, or has already funded on its own, that could actually possibly hurt us in obtaining that state funding. So, there could be value in understanding exactly what programs are being proposed, and seeing what the potential state funding opportunities are. Those funding opportunities don't generally exist for environmental protection or law enforcement, or at least not yet, to the extent that we're seeing them for the education and early intervention. So, that's something that we may want to pay attention to as we go along.
So then, Patrick, your timeline for coming back to the board with a, with a grant program to approve?
If it would work to do that at the end of March, that should be possible.
Yeah.
Or maybe even the first Tuesday in April, since the board does not meet March 31st, if that works for you, okay.
All right, thank you for the update, and thank you for the update on the number. I know the most important thing is the budget, what we feel comfortable with that we can allocate, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one final question. You said you were asking about local agencies asking for this, we have access to that money as well.
Both of these programs so far that the state has put out there actually don't allow the county to be the primary agency. There's one program, for instance, the Youth Substance Abuse Disorder Prevention Program, which appears targeted towards a lot of the things that the First Five Director was talking about. A community group can partner with school districts, for instance. There's also community reinvestment grants that local nonprofits or groups would apply for, but they can partner with public health. Unfortunately, these programs, at least from what I'm seeing in this first round, the county or cities, local agencies aren't able to solely apply for it. They can work in a partnership with existing local groups that are engaged in those activities.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Supervisor Brown. So, one of the things that I'd like to see us do before we start, you know, figuring out percentages to divvy up or anything like that, one of, one of the things that, that, you know, I've been concerned with and predicted that might happen, but we can avoid that, I think. First of all, I think there's one justification with, that's an exception to what I'm going to say, but I think whatever money we have, we should spend it. We don't need to save it, we don't need to reserve it, except for some of, some that we may have to give back because they didn't issue the permit. You mentioned that last, last time, and I think that's valid. That's minimal, though. But I think it's there to use, it's not there for a reserve, it's not there for that, and so, the use of it should be to identify those that aren't playing by the same rules and the unfair business practices of those that are actually in business and doing it right. And, because what you're going to have, and this was, this was the concern I had, the prediction, if, I hope, I hope I've proven wrong, because I am not, there's no satisfaction in being proven right in this, if, if, say there's 10 people that are doing it right, and there's 100 that are doing it wrong, the 10 are going to look around and go, nothing's happening to these other 100, why would we want to do it right? So, two drop off, every year you get more and more drop off, next thing we're right back to where we started from, and nobody's, nobody's generating anything of what the intended purpose of this, this ballot measure was to begin with. So, so I think you really need to go after those that are, that need to be enforced, that's my, my opinion. You go after them, and then once everybody are, you know, the, the large percentage of those that are, that are growing in the county are on board with this program, then you have money to be able to do all these other things that we talked about in the application. So, I don't think, I don't think you can start, you know, splitting it up until you have mostly a large percentage of folks on board, so. And I agree completely with the, when we wrote the ordinance, it was the intention was to bring the people into compliance, into the legal industry, and you're right, the missing part right now is the unfortunate part for doing it wrong. So, I definitely think that needs to be an impetus here, starting out, especially since it's just getting established in a foothold.
Your board may recall that some time ago, you considered an ordinance that would go after the SCOFF laws, those who weren't, and I believe that the Chief Building Official and People in Community Development wanted to review it and make it tougher, so, I think that's probably in process somewhere.
We'll have to inquire about that and see what is coming back. It is, and I, I appreciate that, because I think, I think Andy is, has got some thoughts and too, because he and I talked about, you know, different ways, you know, because I'm still concerned about the, you know, the guys going out in bulletproof vests and being put in harm's way like that, when there are other ways, other options available to them of viewing this stuff without actually putting yourself at risk with, from the air and that type of thing. So, I have talked to him about that, and I think maybe they are putting something together, and so, we can check on that, yeah.
And I've been, I've been actively pursuing ways to combat the, those not following the rules as well, and so, I will be working with Anita. I've been communicating with the Sheriff's Office and Code Enforcement. Eventually, I'll bring back to the board all the, all my findings and what strategies we might have available to us that we have not utilized.
Excellent.
I need a bigger flag out here.
Go ahead, Tina, I apologize.
I'm going to pull your big flag out.
Yeah, there you go.
Getting back to what Carla had to say, I, I believe that we do need to be putting a percentage aside to help with our, our youth, to educate, for intervention places. I don't know if 25% right now is, is the number I would go with, but I do believe we need to have a percent that goes to our youth, and I believe the Children's Council is the best place to determine how this money should be spent, because they have everybody sitting at the table with them. I don't think us up here would be equipped to make those decisions. We've, we've seen that when we work in silos, work, we don't have the progress that we need to see. So, this group, I've seen over and over again how they work together on projects to further their agenda. So, I think that we need to have a percentage put aside, and it needs to go to our Children's Council to determine how that's spent.
All right. Heard all that, Carol? All right, excellent. Any public input on this, this specific?
Any public input on this, this specific item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring this back. We am going to ask that we take a five-minute break before we start, start the next item, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just to be clear, the direction then in terms of the, the clarification, proration versus, does your board feel they've covered that sufficiently for staff?
I thought so, Patrick. You said you'd come back with something correct on March, or April.
Yeah. And we're going to, we're going to reach out to staff, our, our staff right now and find out what their, what their current need is, not their, not their Christmas list, but their grocery list. And I really want to know what it really is going to take to keep involved, not just as a, you know, chance to raise money, you know, kind of thing, so.
So there's two things that we're going to return on. We're going to return with a policy revision, a draft for your consideration around the first set of issues we were talking about, the billing. And then secondly, we're going to return to you with a draft, Paul, see for how you can allow the cannabis mini grant program to work.
Okay. And one other, just minor detail, it's just minor, but it could be something, I mean, we're not always going to be here. We need to make sure that things are clarified. This, the, the definition of grading, I want to get that ironed out. I don't care what it is, but for future boards' sake, they need to know what grading actually means. So maybe that would require an ordinance change or just a definition.
A resolution of what was the intention.
We have definitions in here, grading is not defined.
Right.
And I know what grading is.
No, there is a provision in the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
There is a provision in the ordinance that does allow for, and your board's engaged in it twice now, with regard to clarification and adjusting things. The prohibition is you can't take action that increases the tax and you can't take action that broadens its scope. So in other words, it can't go from $1 a square foot to $5 a square foot because you think that's a better idea. Those types of things. But within that framework, the ordinance as written does give your board the ability to adjust as circumstances evolve, as the industry evolves.
That's why we went from medical to recreational or personal use, yeah.
Yes, there's a lot of assists in there for those purposes.
I agree. We need to make sure that we're clear on it and that it's clear for future purposes.
All right. Okay. That, we're going to take a five-minute break before we start again. Okay. We're going to go ahead and bring the meeting back to order at 11:03 a.m. I think for timing wise, I just want to let everybody know kind of what we're thinking here, or well, what I'm thinking as a board. Obviously, it's probably a timely item. If we could try and really think about, probably looking to take a lunch at 12:30 and then reconvene back here at 1:30 to finish out the item. Hopefully we can get this thing completed in that timeframe. If not, then we will take a lunch and come back and reconvene at 1:30 on the issue. So we're going to go ahead and move forward as we do every day. So we're on item 6.6, public hearing, or 10 a.m. item, public hearing, appeal to the Board of Supervisors, AB 1907, for a major use permit, 1909 grocery outlet appeal. And just as we did before, this will be a public hearing, so anybody testifying needs to be sworn in.
And Mr. Chair, you may want to have counsel for any parties to announce their presence?
Yes, if you could do that.
My name is George McDonald with law firm Katz, Offner, Riggs. On behalf, on behalf of the developer, Kimco Incorporated, as well as Valley Oaks Land and Development.
Excellent.
Hello. My name is Robert Bowen, counsel for Lake County Local, with co-counsel Talaffany, who could not be present.
All right, excellent. So at this time, if you're going to give testimony in today's public hearing, please raise your hand and be sworn in. So if you think at any time, you may please stand up, raise your hand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Did you folks raise your hand?
They're the attorneys.
Oh, they don't have to raise their hands?
They talk, but you can't hold them.
It's not going to work anyway?
You can't hold them.
We'd like to make the testimony.
No. The final thing, Mr. Chair, is because we do have two counsel here, you, you may want to inquire as to a time estimate for each of their, their presentations here, if there is an idea at all.
I would thank the board for, you know, it's time, but all I have is the supplement which was given to you yesterday, and I realize it came in late because of the.
We're not picking you up on the mic.
Yeah, you're going to step up over there.
You can go over there. Thank you so much.
Is that what's, is that what, what is here?
Yes.
That you gave this to us yesterday?
It came in yesterday.
With the expectation I was going to read it today? Just checking.
No, just with the expectation that it would be considered before any decisions were made, that's all.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning. So I will make a brief statement and if that latest report that I believe was submitted this morning is to be considered, I'll make some comments about that as well because I did have a chance to review it about 15 minutes ago. And other than that, I'll probably make about a 15-minute statement, open it up to any questions the board should have. Mr. Fletcher Thornton of the developer is also here to answer any technical issues that the board may have. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for the information. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with community development. Anybody be joining you up here?
I think Mark Roberts may be coming down. So for now, it's just me. So good morning, supervisors. We have before us an appeal of a grocery outlet that was approved.
One second, one second, Eric. So if Mark Roberts is coming down in a few minutes, we'd stop proceedings and swear him in before he come up. Okay.
What we have before us is an appeal of an October 24th, 2019 decision by the Planning Commission for an 18,000 square foot building that would house a grocery outlet store in Valley Oaks Development. Valley Oaks was approved for a general plan of development and for a specific plan of development. And one of the requirements based on the zoning of the property and the history of the property was that anybody that builds commercially within the development has to apply for a use permit. That was one of the requirements of the 2015 decision for Valley Oaks. So the applicant did that. They applied for major use permit, UP 1909, and they provided an addendum to the approved EIR that had been certified by the county to enable a two-point, I believe it's 2.7 acre parcel adjacent to the approved land area to be considered as well for an alternate access. Caltrans has weighed in. Caltrans has essentially said that the grocery outlet can proceed, in their opinion, without further development of a secondary access, but there were some stipulations to the secondary access that they had provided. And with that, I'm referring to the comments that are dated July 12th, 2019 from Rex Jackman, who's the regional director for Caltrans. So getting back to the grocery outlet appeal, the Planning Commission decided to approve it. I do not know what the vote was. I suspect it was unanimous, but it was approved. They approved UP 1909 and they voted to adopt the SEQA addendum. On October 31st, the appellant timely appealed and cited seven bases for the appeal, which I've identified in the staff report. Mr. Chair, and by the way, I do have a PowerPoint prepared, but I wasn't going to get into it. I felt like it would be more expeditious if I just hit the highlights. And I provided a fairly extensive, I don't know, rebuttal to the appeal points. But in essence, the appellant has indicated that a proper hearing notice was not given, that the grocery outlet usage presents an unreasonable fire hazard. Do we need to stop and have Mr. Roberts sworn in?
I'm going to do that. I was going to interrupt you here.
Thank you.
We also need to talk about, you know, so you don't want to show your PowerPoint presentation. You're going to go right into paperwork.
It's completely up to the board. If you want me to do the PowerPoint presentation, I sure can.
How long is the PowerPoint presentation?
12 slides, maybe.
Yeah. So I think we should see the PowerPoint presentation. And can I swear in? Mr. Roberts, if you'd please stand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So hopefully not.
Yes. Thank you.
Mark, I can't see the screen. Could you find that PowerPoint? Yeah, if you're.
Did you send it to her?
No, it's on the E-drive. We should be able to access it from here because we do the same with the Planning Commission.
You may have to log in as you, Mark. I don't know that Johanna's credentials will have your drive.
What?
Just changing, or not the, switch user.
Thank you for saying yes to the PowerPoint.
BOS Presentations.
Or planning division?
Can you set it to the individual, individual slides? Great, thanks. Uh, no, I don't think so. Okay, I'm going to skip forward. I've already covered part of this. The subject site is 141 total acres, of which 47, give or take, is zone PDC, which is Plan Development Commercial. And the remainder portion, which is up here, is zone PDR, which is Plan Development Residential. Existing development, the site is vacant. The zoning I've already indicated, parcel size I've indicated, slope, it's fairly flat. It does about a drainage channel. Oops. And the permit requested was a major use permit, UP 1909, and the adoption of the addendum to the EIR. So in order to verify conformance, findings had to be made that it complied with the general plan or conformed with the general plan. It conformed with the Lake County zoning ordinance. It conformed to the Middletown Area Plan, and it was consistent with the EIR that was ultimately certified for the project. So the SEQA evaluation, the steps involved had to do with the draft EIR, the final EIR that was adopted, and the EIR addendum for UP 1909, which was essentially approved with the use permit by the Planning Commission. So as I indicated, the appellant's position, they had seven points of appeal that were identified in the initial appeal. Proper notice was not given. Grocery outlet, outlet usage presents an unreasonable fire hazard. Project is substantially changed from the project certified within the original EIR. Project is inconsistent with Middletown Area Plan. Project was put on hold by the Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District. Approval of UP 1909 was not compliant with SEQA requirements until a revised EIR is drafted and circulated for public comment. And the approval of the amendments to the EIR and UP each fails to implement all feasible operational mitigation measures. Staff disagrees, and the reason for the disagreement is within the board's memo that I provided. So there are six findings for approval that have to be met with a major use permit. The Planning Commission made each of these individual findings, which I'm not going to go through at this point, but they are, again, identified within the, the memo that I provided to the, to the board. So what needs to happen if, if the board agrees that the appeal should be denied is that the approval of major use permit, UP 1909, needs to be acknowledged and restated, and that the EIR addendum for the project would provide sufficient mitigation measures that no adverse environmental impacts would result. So our recommendation is that the appeal be denied, file number AB 1907, the use permit 1909 be approved, and that addendum to the EIR be adopted. And that concludes my presentation. One thing I did want to mention, in going through the proposed motion this morning, I noticed two things that need to be corrected. Under use permit motion, on the last page of that board memo, on line three, Highway 29 needs to be added. It doesn't identify the location of the highway. And the very last line references the original date of the staff report that went to the Planning Commission. In reality, the date that should have been in there could either be the Planning Commission date and February 18th, which is the date of the memo, February 18th, 2020, or the reference to the October 10th, 2019 date can be stricken and the February 18th, 2020 date can be inserted, either one of the two.
Okay. Do we have those two corrections that need to be noted?
Well, it depends on how the motion goes at the end, but.
Yeah, so it's premature there, Mr. Chair, but also the 218 refers to what specifically? Because the memorandum to your board is dated March 3, so.
I thought the memorandum was actually dated February 18th, but whatever the, well, I have it right here. Let me take a look.
Yeah, in our agenda, it's dated today. March 3rd, 2020.
Yes, you're right. So it should be March 3rd.
Just to add a comment to the reason why it says March 3rd is because when items are uploaded into the board agenda software, the clerk changes any, any date the department might have had on the memo to the date the item will be heard.
Yeah, that happens.
Standard practice.
Regularly, yeah.
Its relevance is for identification purposes.
Right, yeah. Okay. At this point, is that your presentation in your case for community development?
Yes, let's see, have any questions for me?
Any questions from the board?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Moving along, we'll go ahead and the appellant or any interested parties wish to testify may do so at this point. So if you can come on up front, Mr. Robert Bowen.
Thank you. So as, as indicated at the outset of this line item, my office submitted a supplement to the appeal yesterday and attached to it the environmental report and the traffic study for your review. My office represents Lake County Local and Unincorporated Association of Local, Middletown and Hidden Valley residents. We're concerned about the proposed Valley Oaks grocery outlet as the project was approved by the County of Lake's Planning Department. As a statement of interest, members of the appellant may be adversely affected by the potential traffic, air quality, soil quality, groundwater quality, noise, public health, safety hazards imposed by the project. Appellants include individuals and their families who live and work in Middletown and Hidden Valley. Because they're local residents, the individual members of Lake County Local would be directly affected by the traffic, noise, air quality, soil quality, groundwater quality, health and safety, and other impacts created by the project. Individual members may also work on the project itself and as such would be first in line to be exposed to any health and safety hazards that exist on the project site. This appeal dated October 31st for the. addresses the approval UP 1909. Thereafter, appellant submitted a first amended appeal in a timely manner, dated same date, which first amended appeal only updated the signature of the appellant to include the member of Lake County Local. The contents of the appeal and the first amended appeal are incorporated herein by this reference. Appellant offers the following comments as a supplement to the appeal. The addendum fails to adequately evaluate the project's negative impacts. As indicated in the appeal, appellant commissioned an environmental report from SWAP that reviewed the October 2019 staff report and the October 2019 addendum to the 2008 environmental impact report for the project. A copy of that report is attached. That is the environmental report. The environmental report concludes that the addendum fails to adequately evaluate the project's hazards and hazardous materials, air quality, and greenhouse gas impacts. As a result, emissions and health risk impacts associated with construction and operation of the proposed project are underestimated and inadequately addressed. An updated analysis pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act should be prepared to adequately assess and mitigate the potential hazards and hazardous materials, air quality, health risk, and greenhouse gas impacts that the project may have on the surrounding environment. The addendum failed to properly evaluate health risks. The environmental report demonstrates that the addendum failed to evaluate or mention the potential health risks associated with the project activities. By failing to prepare a construction or operational health risk assessment for existing sensitive receptors, the project is inconsistent with recommendations set forth by the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, the organization responsible for providing recommendations for health risk assessments in California. Further critical details on the health risks posed by the project and the lack of proper assessment thereof are provided in the environmental report. The addendum fails to properly evaluate project air pollutant emissions. The environmental report determined that the addendum fails to quantify or evaluate the proposed project's construction and operation-related air pollutant emissions. As a result, the project's air quality and health risk impacts and associated emissions are inadequately addressed and mitigated. By failing to prepare a construction or operational health risk assessment for existing sensitive receptors, the project is inconsistent with recommendations set forth by the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, the organization responsible for providing recommendations for health risk assessments in California. Until an updated analysis quantifies and evaluates the proposed project's construction and operation-related emissions, the project approval should be set aside. A full environmental review of the health risks noted above must be conducted. The traffic assessment on the project was inadequate. As further indicated in the appeal, appellant also commissioned a traffic report from KOA that reviewed the staff report and the addendum for traffic impacts associated with proposed project. A copy of that report is attached. The staff report indicated the following regarding the proposed project. Quote, "Pursuant to the traffic analysis prepared by W. Trans, a left turn lane is required for any further development beyond what is authorized with this permit," close quote. Critically, the underlying traffic study was not provided with the staff report. As a result, and further due to the lack of a recent area-wide traffic study or plan, appellant and other members of the public desiring to understand what the impacts of this proposed project and others in the immediate area will be cannot do so. The missing traffic study makes the following unclear. How have traffic volumes and operations changed in the area since the 2008 EIR was completed? How will the new roadway connection on Hartman Avenue and proposed new roadway called Oak Meadow Drive operate when the grocery store opens, and will through traffic be delayed? Without the proposed roadway connection to the roundabout at State Route 29, how will the area roadways and the roundabout handle the single access to and from the project site with that use and additional planned cumulative projects? As noted in the traffic report, the EIR for the larger Valley Oaks Plan Development, which underlies the addendum, was completed in 2008. That EIR analyzed a complete proposed larger cumulative development of the Valley Oaks Plan area. However, the EIR is 12 years old at this date. Inasmuch as this aged EIR was not amended by the addendum, it remains unchanged, and yet, according to the staff report, the EIR and addendum were relied upon for the project approval. Table 1 on the traffic report provides a trip generation estimate for the proposed project. Using trip rates defined by Trip Generation, 10th Edition, published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the proposed project could generate as many as 1,922 daily vehicle trips, a total of inbound and outbound trips, including 69 a.m. peak hour trips and 166 p.m. peak hour trips. Most jurisdictions, depending upon adopted policies, require traffic studies of projects when trips exceed 500 daily trips or 50 peak hour trips. All of these typical thresholds would be exceeded by the proposed project. A further traffic study should be considered based on these trip generation totals and in light of the cumulative impact that will be caused by the project, particularly when coupled with other pending projects in the area and the overall area ambient traffic growth. Local roadway and intersection locations might not be available to handle the new traffic volumes, and large traffic delays could result without improvements that might be provided through project and cumulative impact mitigation measure improvements. As the appellant's environmental report and traffic report demonstrate, the approval fails to comply with the requirements of SEQA and may not be used as basis for approving the project. The addendum and the underlying EIR individually and collectively fail in significant aspects to perform their respective function as an informational document that is meant to provide adequate time to the public to review the project. Quote, "to provide public agencies and the public in general with detailed information about the effect which a proposed project is likely to have on the environment." End quote, "to list ways in which the significant effects of such a project might be maximized." Or, I'm sorry, minimized. For the reasons set forth here, and an appellant's appeal is amended, the approval was improper and must be set aside, and a fulsome environmental review of the project must be conducted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Bone? So, just going over your concerns that you addressed, environmental health concerns of whoever Lake County Local is. Is anybody here from Lake County Local?
No, there's nobody, none of my clients here.
Okay. I don't know who they are. I've never heard of them, so... I just wonder, I didn't hear from them when the development took place of Coyote Valley and the shopping center there. Were they around then, or did they not have concerns then?
I can't speak to the individuals' concerns or intent at any particular timeframe, but I can tell you that they've hired not only the firm, Finney Arnold, but also my firm to have their concerns voiced to the board here.
Okay.
Which is clearly their right.
Was that a concern that you had then?
I was just recently hired.
I'm not your R, but...
You are honorable, but I'm sorry.
So, okay, it's kind of a rhetorical question, but it's, I'm trying to make a point here. There are developments there, and I'm just curious if they were concerned about the environmental impacts and the environmental health-related air quality, you know, all that kind of stuff that's generated by that development.
Again, I can't speak to their concerns in time, but I can speak to your concern about it, and I can say that I actually don't think that it's a matter that should weigh on the decision as to whether or not it presently meets the legal requirements.
And I appreciate what you don't think, but I do think that it's all relevant because it's all part of one big giant project in that valley of development. We've got a general plan, an area plan, and it allows for some development in those areas. And as far as I can see, the proposal is consistent with that. But I want to go, let's go to your traffic concerns then. So, the traffic concerns that you have, this, and I'm not a traffic engineer...
Neither am I, Supervisor, and that's why we submit...
But I do drive, and I do spend some time in Hidden Valley once in a while down there in that general area. And I know, and I think, that a lot of the reason this was proposed there is because of the traffic already in that area. So, basically, these 1922 daily vehicle trips for this project are 1,922 vehicle trips that either go to Middletown to shop or they go over the mountain to shop. So, it's not 1,922 additional trips. It's that, those are the trips that happen. So, basically, they're coming in closer, and I see that. You know, I didn't see, you know, Lake County Local concerned about the environmental health or the air quality emissions issues of the equipment that was used for the roundabout, which was pretty substantial, you know, any of the other developments. So, I'm just not sure that all this stuff that is, you know, thrown up against the wall hoping some of it will stick really applies now all of a sudden we're at this tipping point of one project that, you know, everything else was fine, but now we're at this tipping point that's just gonna be this huge disaster that's going to occur. So, that's why I'm just trying to give you an opportunity to explain how 1,922 vehicle trips are somehow unique that wouldn't happen other than if it weren't for this development.
All I can speak to Supervisor on that point is that you should consider the traffic study carefully. The traffic report provides you details about what those...
You're the one you submitted to us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, well, I won't because, I mean, it was submitted to us today, so I don't have the opportunity to pour through this whole thing. I can, the only thing I have is the experience that I have to apply some common sense as to how traffic actually works. And there's not 1,922 new cars coming to that area because of a proposed development. They're cars that are already driving in that area. And I don't need to be a traffic engineer to figure that out, so...
As I said, I would just encourage the supervisor to look at the reports, consider the data that's provided, consider the background of the individuals who are actually providing that data, the scientists involved, and make your decision accordingly.
Were they scientists that you guys hired to do this study? Or was it somebody independent that was unbiased and who paid for them? Just curious.
Let me go on the record with, I don't believe there's an unbiased person involved in this matter at all, at all.
We are. You know, I think we are. But we just, we have to be able to wade through the bias to get there, so...
Thank you, thank you, Supervisor.
Mr. Kevin, would you like first to ask or answer any questions you have? Are turning?
Yeah, yes.
If you'd like to sit up here, I can make a statement up here as well, whatever the board prefers.
If you'd like to, you can come on up front.
So, I'll start off here.
Please state your name.
Yes.
Again, my name is George McDonald. I'm on behalf of the respondent and the developer, Kimco and Valley Oaks. I'm with the law firm Katzoff &amp; Riggs. Just a little bit about myself so the board understands. I live in Hidden Valley myself, actually. Very close to where this development is proposed. I grew up in Lower Lake, you know, Lower Lake Elementary, Oak Hill Middle School, Lower Lake High School, Uba College. So, that's me if you want to talk about someone who's actually local and interested in this project. I've also never heard of Appellant Lake County Local before this time. And as far as the, I suppose, the timeliness of the appeal, I think that's also debatable. I do, I know that there was an appeal filed on October 31, which was signed by Mr. Finney only. And Mr. Finney, he's an attorney from Los Angeles, and the board may be aware he's involved in a lot of these types of appeals throughout the state, appealing grocery outlet developments in small communities. And that's kind of his MO and what he's doing here. And I think it's pretty clear who he's acting on behalf of. It's not on behalf of Lake County Local, who no one here is present. There's no individual member present here. And it's my understanding no individual member of Lake County Local has submitted any comments or attended any public hearings. So, if the concern is really about the individual members of a group, I'm just, I don't think that actually exists. I think what the real concern here is our grocery stores, large corporate grocery store chains who are threatened by affordable grocery options in rural communities. And I think that really gets to Supervisor Brown's point about the traffic. I myself, if I want to shop somewhere, I drive to Clear Lake, to grocery outlet in Clear Lake, and I think a lot of my neighbors do as well. So, that's really what the traffic mitigation report is failing, or what the traffic report is failing to consider, is that this might actually reduce traffic because there's a lot of people who live in Hidden Valley, a lot of elderly people who live there who would rather not drive to Santa Rosa or drive to Clear Lake to do their grocery shopping. Hardesters is unaffordable for a lot of people who live in their community. I mean, it's an option, however, it's just, it should not be the only option. So, I would also mention the, so, right, the first appeal was filed on October 31. There's a supplemental appeal filed on November 5, and that would not be timely. And that's the first time an actual individual signed on to the appeal, and that was Lamont Kuscher, I believe is how you pronounce his name. He doesn't seem to be present here either. And I noticed in the supplemental, the supplemental materials received this morning, there was no one identified either, just Mr. Finney. And with respect to those materials, you can see from the materials themselves, it was Mr. Finney who retained the firm, the consulting firm from Los Angeles. Now, I'd like to point something out. So, if you look at the comments, the purported comments on page 5, the second to last paragraph of page 5 says, "An urban setting was selected for the model." I mean, clearly, this report has no application to what we're talking about here. Hidden Valley Lake is not an urban setting. An urban model should not have been selected to do the analysis for the air quality. So, I just think this, this report, its findings have absolutely no application or relevance to what we're talking about. Should not be considered whatsoever. I mean, besides the point that it was submitted this morning, which is, I think, another tactic used by Finney and throughout these appeals is to come in at the very last minute after there's been a substantial EIR prepared and a lot of work done to move this along, and they come in at the last minute to delay and throw a wrench in it with the hopes that someone's going to give up. And I think that's really the tactic here. And as far as the other allegations that somehow this sub-project, which, right, I think the Planning Commission was correct in their analysis that this is a sub-project within the larger project. The larger project has already been approved. And that happened, I believe, in 2015 that was approved. So, this is a sub-project concerning the grocery outlet only. A lot of appellant's arguments have to deal with the project in general, and they really don't apply to this sub-project. This is concerning the grocery outlet development. There's been no substantial change. The zoning's the same. This site was proposed to be a commercial development when it was originally proposed as part of the project. Nothing's changed here. The only change is, I believe, is the Oak Meadow Drive, and that has to do with the construction of the roundabout. And that was, right, Caltrans came in and made that construction after the project had been approved. And it's my understanding Caltrans did a lot of traffic studies in connection with that project. So, the statement that there's been no recent traffic studies done with respect to this area, I think is just false. And so, the commission, they adopted a mitigated negative declaration. And that's exactly what's required under SEQA to move forward. I mean, SEQA is very clear. There's a presumption against redoing an EIR and having to go back and redo findings and redo research that has already been done for this exact development site. It's very clear that there's a presumption against this. And when there's minor changes, as we have here, for example, an access road, and it should be noticed that the original EIR even contemplated off-site access roads to be constructed. This specific issue was contemplated. When there's such of this, then SEQA provides for the addendum process, and that's what was used here. It's completely sufficient, entirely proper. And I think the improper aspect here is for law firms from Los Angeles to come in here and now oppose it on the last minute and require the developer to... I mean, now the project's been delayed approximately six months, a lot of expense to local community. This is jobs that people could be having working in our local community, additional options for food in our local community. And I just think it should not be permitted. And as I mentioned before with Finney, I submitted a letter regarding this as well. Finney, he has, I believe, three or four appeals of the same nature pending right now throughout California, all against grocery outlets, all on the exact same grounds, talking about health and safety. They're essentially boilerplate appeals. Talking about how the public hearing wasn't sufficient because members, individual members who are never identified couldn't attend. I do know that very recently there was a hearing in front of CSD, you know, the Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District. No one from Lake County Local attended that, and that was in on the Hartman Road location at the CSD building. So, I think it's pretty indicative that no one really, there's no individual person of interest here. Also, with respect to the notice, I do believe the notice was entirely proper. I think the requirement is all owners of property must be notified within 700 feet. I don't believe anyone actually resides within 700 feet of this project. I'm not aware of anyone. I drive past this location twice a day. And it's, as we all know, it's actually, it's, I mean, it's in a place that's made for, to be developed, essentially. That's what the point of this is.
And if I may add, I believe in the report it states that we went 730 feet or 725 feet, so we even went further than that.
That's correct, yes.
We had actually sent out, I believe, over 300 notices.
600.
600, thank you. Can you remember that? Can you remember that?
And with that, I'll just conclude to say, I mean, I speak to neighbors, I speak to people in the community, I don't know anyone that actually opposes this grocery outlet development other than people who are interested commercially, and commercial interests, that's just an entirely improper basis to appeal a planted use, a use permit in the guise of environmental concerns that just are really non-existent. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Any questions for folks here?
No, I just have a comment. I was actually surprised to see this on the agenda today, because usually when there's an appeal such as this, about a month previous to it, that's when the phone calls start, and that's when the community is in an uproar about this. I have not received one phone call, so it was surprising to see of this and not receiving any phone calls.
Thank you. All right, if there are no more questions, we'll go ahead and, anyone who would like to get up and give testimony, we'll go ahead and encourage you to do that. Could you raise your hand if you are considering doing that? How many we got here? Okay.
How do you get sworn in?
You cannot do it unless you get sworn in. We can still swear them in if they would like to. Who was that? Who said they didn't get sworn in? All right. If you'd like to be sworn in right now, you need to stand up and get sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Okay, well, go ahead. If we can keep our comments to two minutes, okay.
Yeah, I don't even burn that much.
Okay.
My name is Tom O'Brien. I'm a homeowner in Hidden Valley, and like he was saying, that everybody we ever talked to wants this grocery outlet to come in. I don't know who you represent, but we've never heard of it, and the safe way over in Clear Lake is, they don't, they're not on par with their other stores, and to go to grocery outlet to get your breaks, or go over the mountain to get to a better store with better selections, and so grocery outlet being closer to home with Hardesters, I think, would be an ideal thing. And for, since living in this county for a little over 20 years, no growth has really happened in the South County, so it's, it's on you guys to help us grow, bring stuff into your tax base, and look out for us, so, that's all.
Thank you. Jack, did you get sworn in? You got sworn in earlier?
My name's Jack Laird. I live in Middletown. You know, I have a passion for this project for one reason, is because I was on the area plan when Ken presented his plan back in about 2004, and, you know, I had a project at the same time, Valley Vintage Fair, and it was 146-unit subdivision, so I did some traffic studies for that in 2007, and, you know, a typical, one of the things I asked for was a time slot of 4:30 to 5:30, because that's where the heaviest traffic is in the evening, and 272 cars turned off in Hidden Valley area, the rest went up to Lower Lake, and so on. So those numbers get kind of skewed when you start looking at bulk numbers of cars. I have a gas station in, I had a gas station in, near Hidden Valley, and we did traffic studies because I put a car wash in, and typically you need about 13,000 cars, and that's about what the number was for the whole day, 13,000 cars a day travel through that corridor. So, you know, the traffic impacts are there already, you know, they don't just necessarily stop in Hidden Valley. And because it's a single route all the way through, everybody that travels into the Lake County corridor hits 29. So, and I, you know, in 2008, I bailed out of my project because I was, my partner was a tax attorney, and he said, "This recession's going to last many years, and it's just going to be disastrous for everybody." So I bailed out. Ken Porter did not bail out. He's been here for 15 years trying to get this project going, and the reality is, in 1973, we're talking about Lake County being the third poorest county in the state. I think we're not too much farther away from that right now, and if we don't start developing things and getting jobs and getting other interests here to keep people here, we're going to be here in another 20 years with the same numbers. So appreciate the Board's support and hope this project gets going.
I live in Hidden Valley. I get around a little bit from the position I have in my business and that, and I want to know, I've talked to my neighbors and everything, and all they want and deserve is a broad range of choices to help them identify what helps them individually or for their family's needs. To, to expand these choices allows freedom, and all I've heard for the last several years is how the county needs to generate revenue to help with all the services, from roads to clean up our properties and that. The only way to do it is to broaden our tax base. The only way to broaden your tax base is to allow business development. I'm right there with Supervisor Brown as far as the traffic. The traffic circle has made a world of difference. The same amount of people travel in and out to either go over the hill to Santa Rosa or down to Napa, or, or up to Clear Lake, or up to Lakeport to shop. So when I heard that just a minute ago, I was surprised. The majority of people in the South County want to see the development take place, and that's why I want to state that I think we should support it and move on.
Hi, my name is Kim Lewis. My family and I, we reside in Hidden Valley Lake. We've been here about five years. Moving from areas where there was a lot of options, coming here was one of those things we weren't sure if we would be able to stay. Majority of our shopping we do is in Santa Rosa. A lot of it, we try to do locally whenever possible, but product availability is always an issue. Pricing for a family of six is not always feasible at your only option within a certain mile radius from your home. One thing I found that was really interesting in the Lake County bloom, that was Mayor of Clear Lake, Russ Kramer, was quoted saying in February, on the February 21st article, and if it's okay to quote, you know, "We had a consultant do a study of retail economic growth for Lake County. Their study found that there was as much as 600 million annual leakage for the county." Granted, some of that leakage comes from online shopping, which we know a lot of us do, that's pretty important to know when it comes to making, for potential developers to know when opening a business in Clear Lake and in the county. I think that right there, a lot of us do online shopping, myself included. If I'm not able to buy something in Clear Lake or to support a small business in Middletown or Hidden Valley, I do have to go over the hill, and by doing that, I end up doing all my shopping over the hill. And by doing that, we're just, all the money, and I know that our neighbors and, you know, in South Lake County, we all basically have the same issue, is, you know, with kids, where do you buy their clothes? You know, this development, not only grocery outlet, but for food, for groceries, to buy monthly groceries at Hardesters wouldn't, wouldn't be really possible, plus they don't have everything we need. So I just want to, as a resident, I just want to say that we hope that this is able to move forward, and having one option is not an option.
Thank you.
The timer has diverted to three, and the chair wanted two.
Two minutes if we can.
In fact, you should probably make up for it and average it out, maybe put it at one for right now.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Rob.
We'll do our best. Keep us trapped.
I know, I know. Melissa Fulton, CEO-
That's the Bernie Sanders approach.
Hey. Melissa Fulton, CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce.
Go ahead and go.
Just go, okay. All right.
You got 23 minutes.
The Lake, the Lake County Chamber of Commerce is for economic prosperity for all businesses, which relates to economic prosperity for all residents. I appreciate the comments of Supervisor Brown. I find the comments, and with all due respect for the young man's profession, the appellant's attorney, they're ludicrous, I'm sorry, but this project is needed to help the Hidden Valley South County area grow, and as the young lady before me said, to provide choices for our residents. We need that, and we need to stop this over-the-hill leakage, and this is a step in that direction. It's obvious that the company that the appellant represents is all over the state of California making these boilerplate appeals against progress for small business. So that alone proves that, first of all, they have no local support. It doesn't exist. You've heard from residents of the area that they are in favor of this project, and God bless Ken Porter for his tenacity, and there are good things happening in South County that will benefit each and every one of us, it doesn't matter where we live. So the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, our Board of Directors, our Governmental Affairs Committee, we urge you to, to deny the appeal and to let's move forward and give Lake County more choices. Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't get sworn in.
Mr. Kearney, then you need to get sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
My name is Bill Kearney. I'm running for Supervisor, actually for District Number Five.
You can't say that.
I'm not running for Supervisor for District Number Five.
There's a severe prohibition against campaigning within 100 feet of polling place, which is here.
My name is Bill Kearney. How's that? Okay, yeah, okay. I've been very active in the Chamber of Commerce. I've had two pharmacies in Lakeport, California for the last 40 years. One of the things that we hear all the time is there's no growth in Lake County. I can tell you that when I opened my pharmacy, I was six miles outside of Lakeport. Everybody said I would fail, and I was going against chains at the time. For the last 40 years, there's been one chain after another coming in, or one business that had to deal with pharmacy, and we're still very much alive. I've sold the pharmacies, but competition is a great thing. Competition made us better. If you have a good business, I managed for Walgreens for 15 years before I came to Lake County, and even if we opened a store right next to a major competitor, we were responsible for making profit, because it made no difference who was there, you had to do a better job managing your store. We need more jobs in Lake County. We need more people to be competitive. We need to stop going over the hill. I think Mr. Porter's done a great job with this Valley Oaks project, and I want to see it continue, so I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you and hope that you will listen to the community, because I think they want that pharmacy, that grocery store here in Middletown. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else at this point who'd like to come up? I would ask the appellant, is there anything that you would like to address?
I would like to address one last thing. Thank you, Supervisor. I would speak to one point, Supervisors, and that is any effort, I think, always done here, clearly by the community, in, in the best light possible. But people who hire lawyers to speak for them as representatives are not cowards, and they don't, they shouldn't be treated or in any way referred to as hiding in shadows or anything. They've exercised their constitutional right to hire an attorney to come and speak or to represent their interests. I think there's a significant effort by counsel hired by, by others to paint counsel as, from outside the area, unworthy or should not be heard or listened to simply because where they hold an office or who their other clients are. I think the statement made that it's improper for law firms from LA to come into local communities, and it should not be permitted. It's a scary thing for me to hear as a lawyer from another lawyer, that somehow there should be a law, or that bodies that make decisions should discount positions that parties take because of where they're from, or if they're from outside the area, or if they're from a different place. It's just, it's the kind of us versus them that doesn't bring communities together. I appreciate the Board's effort to consider everybody's ideas here. Some very good comments made by members of the community, I think, should be taken into consideration. My clients are imploring and asking that the Board consider those reports, and that's it. Consider the science, the data, consider the law, and move on. And if the Board's decision ultimately is that this project benefits the community, then so be it. Just make that decision consistent with and within the confines of the law. That's all my clients have asked for, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment of the hearing here, or the hearing, the testimony. We'll bring it back to the Board. Supervisor Brown, I see you already have your-
So I, I wish, you know, will own, the county will own the length of time that it took for this appeal to be heard. That's, that's on us, and that's unfortunate, because it's, could have had the project going. I don't regret or, or wish that the appeal hadn't happened, because I think it gives me, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the Board, it gives me the opportunity to say publicly and in open how much I support this project and supports some growth in the county. I am for denying this appeal for a lot of reasons, but, you know, it's, you know, the idea of painting grocery outlet as the big evil environmental concern that we have does a disservice to the folks, the good folks in this county who actually own and operate, local people that own and operate and provide local jobs of grocery outlet. We've had very good people that own those, and I, I know the attorney, not you, but Tenny, was hired by-
Mr. Finney.
Finney, okay. Whatever his name is. He's not here, and so I didn't get a chance to actually meet him, but Santa Clarita, Safe and Strong, Keep Taft Great, Sustainable Mammoth Lakes, Residents for Oercut, Sensible Growth, you know, those people heard the same exact thing, this boilerplate thing that we, we just heard, and what's not taken into consideration by others, especially those that we're not even hearing from, we get calls from people all the time, you know, people that are concerned. I guarantee you, Hidden Valley's no less vocal than, than others when it comes to something they're really concerned with, but for the city of Clear Lake, the last census was 15,000 people. Lakeport was 4,700. Hidden Valley was 5,579, which makes Hidden Valley the second-largest city in, in Lake County if it were incorporated. So the other, the other towns have a lot of competition, a lot of stores, they all do well. And they've been good to this community, they've been good for jobs, they've been good for competition, as Bill stated, and I don't see Grocery Outlet in Hidden Valley as any different. I think it can only be, only make things better down there. So it, when it comes time, I will gladly, proudly vote to deny this appeal.
Tina, Supervisor Scott.
You know, as a Supervisor, we've actually had special meetings trying to figure out what we could do to grow this county. We are pushing economic development and generating revenue, so sitting up here, I just don't see how we can deny a project when we're trying to push economic development and generating revenue.
Supervisor Scotty.
So I'm looking at the paperwork that we've received, and the KOA estimate of 1,922 is simply based on an estimate from a formula- is simply based on an estimate from a formula found on a online 10th edition of Trip Generation. It has nothing to do with specifically counting the cars and vehicles that go in and out of Hidden Valley. So in my opinion, that is an issue, to look at that and dissuade us from moving forward on this project because of a general estimate that's used throughout the entire country. I think we need to look at the specifics of what the actual impact is, and not just a publication estimate. But overall, our goal here is so much more than this project. Our goal is economic development. That's already been discussed at great lengths here. This is not just a regional project. This is for people traveling through Highway 29, going on through to I-5. When they see a name that they can recognize, like Grocery Outlet, they will stop. They will not go inside of Hidden Valley and hit Hardesters at this moment because they don't even know it's there if they're just passing through. So this is a benefit to the county, not just a benefit to the region down south. I love the fact that we have Grocery Outlet at Clear Lake, and I know we're going to lose some people coming from Hidden Valley to Clear Lake to go shopping, but you know what? They deserve to have those options down there, and we need to see some kind of development because any development at this moment in time is a catalyst to more development. And I know from reading through my reports, there's other major use permits or minor use permits that will come along with this project. It's not just Grocery Outlet. It's the beginning of something much larger. I know we've discussed this with Supervisor Simon at the LAFCO meetings that we go to to make sure that they have all the accessibility to water and sewer and everything else. This project's ready to go, and I see it as a bonus to what we're, we wanted to see things like this, and here it is in front of us. I think that the original seven appeals were easily rebutted. Some of it was that the Water District was on hold. Well, that was taken care of with the LAFCO situation. One of them was the issue of the noticing that was easily proven incorrect. Those seven were easily rebutted on, and this, to me, is just a last-ditch effort to try and dissuade us from doing something. To say that construction is going to create an air district issue, let's just stop everything from happening in Lake County because that means any activity is going to be bad for our health. We've got to do something. We can't stop because of, any activity, any human interaction is going to create some changes for us, but no change is the worst thing that we can do for this county. We need to have change. So I love the idea that competition is good. I am still going to go to Hardesters because they still have the best deli in the entire county. And some people are still going to go there because of specific items that they're looking for. But we don't shop just at Grocery Outlet in Clear Lake, we go to other places as well. That's going to be the same situation there. And I think that roundabout that was created on Highway 29 deals with the traffic congestion issue. Now, I will say a however. Because of the fact that there's further projects being looked on for that property, will traffic be identified, traffic potential issues be identified for each future project as they add more? Because then at that point, we can potentially expect to see more traffic. Is that part of any future major use? Or because now that it's been created, the driveway is there, that will not have an impact?
Was that directed to staff?
Yeah. I'm curious as to any future major use permit for this property where they're looking to expand and add more could potentially add more traffic as it attracts more people off the highway.
Isn't the major use permit anticipating full buildout? I mean, that's.
No.
No, it's for Grocery Outlet only.
Actually, Caltrans, I'm sorry.
Supervisor, I just have a question for clarification.
Well, I was going to say, the Caltrans is pretty clear as far as future development, that they're going to have to, they being the developers, are going to have to mitigate the impacts that are associated with future development. But that wouldn't apply to the Grocery Outlet building. It would just be for future development.
And I just wanted to make sure that that would be the case because that makes me happy to move forward with this, knowing that we will make sure and identify any new mitigations that need to happen for any future projects. So I think this is a great opportunity for us and looking forward to see what the board does with it.
Supervisor Kearney.
I'd just like to go ahead and make the move, make the motion, if everyone's okay.
Yeah, you know, from my point of, yeah.
That's in your district.
Yeah, but I appreciate all the information provided, the Planning Commission definitely did a good job, so go ahead.
I move that the Board of Supervisors make an intended decision to deny the appeal AB 19-07.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors certify that the addendum to the Environmental Impact Report prepared by the Planning Division for the Valley Oaks Project Phase One has been completed in compliance with SEQA and Section 15164 of the State SEQA Guidelines.
Second.
Motion made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors find that the use permit UP 19-09 applied for by Kimco Development Incorporated on property located at Highway 29 and Hartman Road, Hidden Valley, Middletown, 18196 and 18426, South State Highway, Middletown.
Highway 29.
Highway 29. Middletown and 18765 Hartman Road, APN 14-260-24, 14260-36, and 014-260-51 does meet the requirements of Sectors 27, AU, 7I, and 51.4 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and that the Board of Supervisors has reviewed and considered the EIR and addendum which was adopted for this project, and the use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated October.
March 3rd.
March 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Let's move right along.
I didn't know if you wanted to pass the gavel on to it or what.
No, no, that's fine. Perfect. Okay, moving right along, what we have left are Item 7.4, consideration of the following appointments of the Mental Health Board of the Western Region Town Hall. And, yeah, so both, Mental Health Board and the Western Region Town Hall. If members of the board could pull that up, I think they're, obviously, the Worth is.
Right. They're both in line. They're both in line. But I guess you can open it to public comment, and if there isn't anyone, then we'll go forward.
Yeah. Any public comment on these items?
Take that as enough.
No. We'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to appoint Kate Perron Kima to the Worth Town Hall Commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to appoint Pam Simone to the Mental Health Board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Last thing to do before we go into closed session, which I will read up, that is, calendars. Go ahead, Tina.
Ready?
Supervisor Scott.
I have some emails and a grant that I'm working on that I'm going to try to finish up today. I will be attending the City of Lakeport's meeting at 6:00 PM tomorrow. I have a meeting with the Executive Director of Hope Rising, and then Airport Land Use Commission at 2:00 PM. On Thursday, I have a special meeting for the Law Library at noon, a pit count meeting at 1:00, a COC meeting at 3:00, and I'll be volunteering at the Warming Center at 5:30 on Friday. I will be reading in one of the classrooms at Lakeport Elementary School for Read Across America, and then we'll be heading out of town to come back on Saturday to make and drop off a cake at the Black Tie Ball that supports our sheriffs. And then I have an executive committee meeting for Hope Rising on Monday, the 9th. And then at 10 o'clock, I have a committee meeting, a task force meeting, and then a meeting with Carol on Monday in the afternoon, and then back here on Tuesday.
Supervisor Spocky.
Just kind of following up on the conversation we had earlier, I did have a phone conversation with CDFA yesterday about those who are not permitted to grow, and got some really good feedback. I'm going to be having a conversation with Mendocino, who applied their abilities to go after illegal grows and see how that worked out for them and how we might be able to mimic and bring some of that over here. So it's good to know that we have a CDFA as a partner to help us out with that. I know we've been using other partners, but we could invite more to be more productive with that. Also, this afternoon, I'm going to be having a phone conversation with our state parks, want to see how we can better utilize and better advertise our state parks because you kind of don't know we have any until you hit them. Tomorrow, I will be at the CC4C meeting, and then meeting with Chef Robert Cabreros over at Woodland Community College. Thursday morning, I'll be at the judge's breakfast, and I'll find out from Supervisor Brown if I will be at the PSPS committee meeting later that afternoon, and then.
You will.
Okay, so I will, I will be there.
Just to let you know.
And then later on that evening, I will be at the Clear Lake City Council meeting. Don't have anything lined up for the Friday or the weekend as of now, and then back on I'm going to be joining some of the Lake County EDC folks over in Kelseyville to listen to a wireless meeting, just to see how that goes and what opportunities maybe we can use somewhere else as well. And then meeting with Carol to be prepared for our Tuesday meeting.
Excellent. Supervisor Brown.
So, speaking of that, I appreciate your tenacity. No, I do. I don't mind going to those meetings, and I.
Right.
What's that?
Right.
I don't mind going, and anything I can offer for input, but I think, you have to bring that back. I don't know if we can do it now, but at some point, I'd like to, you know, put you on there officially because I think this is going to be an ongoing issue in order to keep continuity for beyond this year. I think you need, your input is valuable, and I think you need to stay on that, so I don't know if we, if we can do that, but bring it back, yeah.
Can do that.
So I do have an appointment this afternoon, 3:00, and then I have Lakeport, or the Airport Land Use Committee meeting, that's still.
2:00 tomorrow.
Yeah, that's, hold on a second, I have one other thing here, too. Oh, yeah, the tennis, the group over in Kelseyville wants to talk about parks with, applying for park grants for the tennis courts over there, so that's on for tomorrow afternoon, too. See if that conflicts. And I have Sunday, I'll be taking my granddaughters, the Christmas present I got to my granddaughters, I'll be going to the Cinderella event down at Luther Burbank, so I'm sure I'll blend right in there, and.
Bring your glass flippers.
Looking forward to that. One thing that I wanted to say, though, is since I've been on my soapbox today, today's election day, so good luck to all the candidates. I think everything has been going pretty well, and I'm excited to see how it works in my district. I'm really looking forward to changes there, as I'm sure a lot of people are. But one thing I would like to say is, in all the elections I've ever been in, I've never actually seen one that had an issue that was as repulsive as what Supervisor Simon has had to go through. I'm embarrassed about that. I mean, I think it's not, and I know, I'm not even going to look at Anita because she's probably just going, I think you've handled it with dignity, and to have somebody's, have racism brought into it, have your civil rights brought into it, you're a built, you're questioning your integrity as a citizen, I am embarrassed, and I think I'm proud of the way you handled that. I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thanks.
Well, it's the truth, so.
Thank you.
I hope to never see it again. That's my point. I hope to never see that again.
So too.
So tomorrow, I have East Region Town Hall, which is in Clear Lake Oaks. CSA 2 is following that out in Spring Valley. Thursday, Workforce Alliance, I think we'll probably do the video shoot here, or a video meeting here. Friday, I have a constituent meeting in Clear Lake Oaks, and then I'll be back there in the evening for a veterans event that Moka just told me about that we'll be going to as well. On Monday, I'll have a meeting with Carol, and then back here for the board meeting on Tuesday, and I wanted to also do a good plug-in for Clash Against Trash on March 21st, when we're doing the cleanup in Lucerne for our pilot project. So nine to one, New Paradigm College.
Finishing out the board meeting today, agenda review afterwards, and then back down in my district. Don't have anything on the books at this point for tomorrow. Would just be down in my district and returning phone calls and emails to constituents. Thursday, the 5th, and I think it's 9:00 AM here at the board, we'll be doing the North Bay Special Board Meeting, Governing Board Meeting for the Workforce Alliance North Bay. We have some important issues we'll be working on there with some transition things that we're going through, and be working through that. Later on that afternoon, I have PSPS committee hearing, or committee meeting here at the courthouse. Friday, I'll be at an event in the morning down in Santa Rosa with Senator Guire, and then later that evening, I am going to be attending the veterans, basically dinner they're having over at the Happy Garden over in Clear Lake Oaks. I've been invited by the veterans, and also invited EJ, and we'll be doing that. Saturday, we'll be attending the Black Tie Ball for the Sheriff's Department, and then back here on Monday preparing for the meeting on Tuesday. All right, with that, that takes care of all the items on our open session here. Go closed session. It is 12:15. Is there anything you think we could maybe knock out on this? Could we maybe knock one out? Maybe 8.3 or something?
Yes, and I could.
And then we could take the lunch break and then come back and get the other two, or just a question?
It's up to your board.
Well, I was thinking 12:30, you know, I was just thinking of timing or something, you know. I guess it is up to our board. Like to take a lunch from 12:30 and come back at 1:30 to finish. Is that all right?
Sure. And I'll tell Crystal Marketan to be here at 1:30 for 8.1.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and read, close session, 8.1.
Chair, the only thing I would say is that my clock shows 12:18. So if your board has questions, if you can do it in, if you can do it in 12 minutes, then that's great. I'm just warning you ahead of time.
Let's just take the break then, and we'll come back at.
1:30.
1:30. All right. So 8.1, sitting as the Lake County IHSS Public Authority Board of Directors, Conference with Labor Negotiator A, Chief Negotiator Bruce Hyde, County Negotiator Crystal Marketan, B, Employee Organization California United, Home Care Workers Union, AFSCME, SEIU, Local 4034. Item 8.2, closed session, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Chief Negotiator M. Long, County Negotiators Carol Hutchins and Pam Sammett, and B, Employee Organizations LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursued to the Government Code Section 5495, 6.9, D2E3, Claim of Nichols.
I agree.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn for lunch, and be back at 1:30.